Good evening, I call this Coventry Town Council meeting to order on Monday, December 16th, 2019. All council members are present. Please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
Thank you. The Pledge of Allegiance is to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Is there anyone that wants to speak during the audience of citizens? And I would ask that it pertains to town council business. Go ahead. We need your name and address if you'd come to the podium, please.
Howard Haverin, 80, Cassidy Hill Road. I'm not a good public speaker, as you soon will see, but I felt compelled to talk tonight for the sake of all Coventry citizens, especially our youth. Well, we have owned a residence in Coventry since 1971. I've seen how our town has improved over these years. I love Coventry. We certainly recently, in 2016, relocated to another home in Coventry. Looking back at Coventry, a little history, at one time, there were three main factions in our town who were not getting along with each other. The North Side, the South Side, and the Farmers. The North Side and the South Side, they didn't like each other, and the Farmers didn't really like either side. An example of this was, I was a Cub Scout den leader, living on the North Side. I was criticized by the higher rocks and scouts for allowing a child from the South Side to be included in my den. It was a sin. The Police Department was very well-run. It was cited for improper property searches, including major damage to our home, shooting at a car that had only backfired, and other embarrassing acts. The state of Connecticut even got involved and demanded better training for our officers. The town manager was at odds with the Police Department and had trouble getting much passed with a town in chaos. The North and South Side fire departments, they didn't exactly love each other either. The building department was awful. I remember when I wanted to put an addition to my home, I couldn't even get a structural builder to come in. I don't want to work with that town. I ended up getting a shoddy job done by a desperate carpenter. The lake had pollution issues. There was a period in this town when the high school was on the verge of being decertified by the state. The roads were in bad condition, and a lot of people just didn't want to live in Coventry. New people did move into Coventry. One reason being our advantageous location between I-84 and I-384, and our wonderful rural setting. These new citizens, they didn't want to continue to see these conditions exist, and got involved in our political system. The town has greatly progressed since those days. A perfect example is to look at our model school system. We now have a structural police department. We have a very knowledgeable town manager who gets much accomplished. He can find grant money wherever he may be hiding, and works cohesively at all. The lake is once again in good shape. Our roads have been greatly improved, and we have a non-biased, user-friendly building department and a very helpful building inspector. I've used them. I pull permits now. Unfortunately, there are people who sit in this council who want to turn the clock back. Their MO is, pit Democrats against Republicans, divide this town in what party you support, which can lead to hate thy neighbor. Basically, call at least half our residents the enemy. Ostracize anybody who doesn't agree with them, like they did with the Sobos and with Bill Oros. Even rewrite God's calling. Matt O'Brien Jr. professing his Creasor Park rant that only Republicans are people of God. The old God trick. What was that all about? That is really scary and unstable stuff. They have embarrassed our town, creating disgusting articles in the journal. Stuff like this. Is that our town? Several people, oh, I'm sorry. One of my cycling partners said to me a few weeks ago while we were cycling that she's glad she doesn't live in Coventry. She lives in town. Your town, quote, "Your town has some real problems, doesn't it?" "Yes, it does," I replied. "The O'Briens and their hateful tactics." Several people, both Republicans and Democrats, asked at the last town council meeting for an apology for them. None was given. Not a big surprise to me. Let's go to the election of the school board, and listen closely. In reality, the Republicans did not win the majority vote for the school board. Bill Oros won the majority, and I will prove it to you. He won it for the Republicans. My wife and I are both Democrats, and we voted for Bill. If it wasn't for Bill, you wouldn't have gotten our vote. We would have voted for a Democrat, and the Democrats would be in charge. So much for listening to how people voted. There were other Democrats in this town who crossed party lines and voted for Bill, too. They have told me that, that they voted for him. So you were in a majority because of him, and I don't think you get that. How disgusting it was to see how you attacked him, what forms you used. You embarrassed yourself, our town, and your own Republican Party. The students were laughing at you at the school board meeting. The parents were disgusted. I know Bill very well, and he is a person of intelligence. He's kind-hearted, has a great sense of humor, and loves helping Coventry and its people. He's also a master gardener I've worked with, and has made our Coventry community garden a huge success. I only wish you guys were more like him, but you're not. I'm not going to use strong words, you know, the type that you two use on somebody you don't like. So in actuality, you two, the liars, are the real traitors, not Bill. Look at the oath you recently took when you were sworn in. I'm going to quote it. "Do you solemnly swear to uphold your duties as members of the Coventry Town Council to the best of your abilities to help you, God, abilities and God." Well, you O'Briens either don't believe in God, since that is part of the oath you swore to, or you really don't have any abilities at all, and thus you resign, and that's the best you can do. You guys won the election and violated the oath you took immediately. The town council election. There again, there were many Democrats who crossed and voted for Michael Sobol, because he's a person of reason and character, who puts the town first and foremost. He's sinned by voting sometimes with what the Democrats have proposed. Yes, Democrats didn't like the way you treated him and voted for him, which helped you win a majority on the town council. We will watch you in the next two years on how well you perform as town council members. Let me quote the first section of Goal Number One for the town council, which is, "Community Cohesion and Collaboration. Work in collaboration with our Board of Education and other boards and commissions to ensure a respectful partnership and providing that goes on." But there's some big words in there. Important words. Community cohesion and collaboration. Important words and values. You need to follow them. Maybe these are only meaningless words, too, so then you did lie to the oath you took, if you don't follow them. Here's my predictions. Mr. O'Brien Senior, you will once again focus on attacking our school board like you did the last time you were in a majority. You will continue to attack any person, Republican or Democrat, who doesn't obey you. You won't make any real progress for our town. Both O'Briens will again use false propaganda to try and win votes in the next election, as you did in the last election, with those misleading, big red signs. Mr. O'Brien Senior, you will basically focus on being the power broker. Isn't that what your specialty really is? Not finances, you previously have stated at other meetings, slaughtering anybody who doesn't follow you blindly. To be honest, I actually have no hope that you O'Briens will make any positive change in how you conduct yourselves. You are too filled with arrogance. You never really listened to any of the citizens who have condemned your actions when they spoke at the last town council meeting. You show that by ignoring their concerns and by not making an apology. Keep it up. We'll do our best to vote you out and place you with nicer people, regardless of their political affiliation, in the next election. People with good intentions, not hate. One last mention. You need to change Section 3.2 of Presiding Officer for Town Council. Replace Chairman to Chairperson. His vote to Chairperson's vote, and his office to the Chairperson's office. We have had, and again have, a woman chairperson. I request that this statement be read into the minutes. And I'm really sorrowful making this, because I'll tell you what, I've only spoken four times all the years I've lived here, and I just don't feel good.
There's someone else that would like to speak?
Hi, I'm Robyn Gallagher, 984 Main Street. So, I was here during the last town council meeting when over a half dozen community members asked for an apology or requested an apology from two members of this town council for Mr. Oros and students who were watching or present for behavior exhibited during the post-election Board of Education meeting. No apology has been forthcoming, and I've really had to wonder why that is. And so I thought about it, and I've really come up with two potential reasons why there might not be an apology. The first is a lack of appreciation that the behavior at issue was inappropriate. And the second is a lack of moral fiber or integrity to issue an apology once it's owing. As to the first one, a lack of appreciation that an apology is owing, if that's the case, I'm frankly disappointed. The two members in question have extensive experience with town politics and understand how public meetings are held. They know when it's inappropriate to speak in a meeting and when it's not. Furthermore, it would mean that they're not very good listeners. They've heard over and over again from various community members why the behavior was inappropriate. They've seen it quoted in the J.I., and most recently quoted by a high school student in a J.I. article that I'm sure everyone has seen. If it's the second issue, a lack of personal fiber or integrity, I'll say, I acknowledge apologizing is hard, you know, but Mr. O'Brien Jr. said at the last town council meeting that democracy isn't always convenient or comfortable. This is the uncomfortable part. We're all adults, and I'm sure we've all gotten here by having to apologize from time to time. We all know that it's no fun, but in many cases, the best way to do it is like a Band-Aid. You just do it, pull it off quickly, and then it's over with. So again, I stand before you as a member of this community to reiterate that you both owe an apology to Mr. Oros for the way you behaved toward him during the Board of Education meeting. An apology from you is also owed to the CI students who witnessed your behavior while attending that BOE meeting as part of a school assignment. Lastly, you owe apologies to Naomi Lynn Sanders, Owen Dieterly, Eva Coonley, Dylan Patrick, and their families, who had what should have been a celebratory evening, receiving their CAPS superintendent's awards disrupted and derailed by the irresponsible and reprehensible behavior displayed that night by adults who should know better. I request that this statement be read into the minutes. Thank you.
Can you leave your statement, or do you have a copy? We can make sure our floor gets it.
Thank you so much.
I think there's probably only a couple more that want to speak. We have a guest for 7:45, so go ahead. Name and address, please.
My name is Emma Eaton. I live at 41 Shaun Circle. I'm back. I stand before you once again tonight, because apologies still have not been issued by Mr. O'Brien Senior or Mr. O'Brien Jr. for their behavior during and after the Board of Education meeting that took place on November 14th, 2019. It's been over a month since that meeting, and although members of the community, both here at town council and through multiple other avenues, have clearly asked that this wrong at least be mitigated by a sincere apology, aside from Mr. O'Brien's disjointed and dismissive remarks about revolutionary blood running in Coventry during the reports section of the last town council meeting, following the audience of citizens where you heard from eight of us demanding that apology, there has been no response from either of you. As a reminder, during the November 14th Board of Ed meeting, Mr. Bill Oros, a longstanding member of the Board of Education, made the decision to support an incumbent Board of Education member rather than a freshman candidate for the role of chairperson. This decision was met with overt hostility at the meeting by the meeting's many audience members, behavior that was an embarrassment coming from any grown adult. What brings me before you again is that two members of this council participated in these behaviors at the meeting. Mr. O'Brien Senior was heard shouting at Bill during the meeting. Mr. O'Brien Senior was heard shouting at Bill during the meeting, and Mr. O'Brien Junior participated in similar behavior during the meeting, and in the days that followed, took that behavior online, both on the RTC page and worse, on the page of an activist soliciting harassment of Bill by their followers. Mr. O'Brien Junior even provided Mr. Oros's email address on that post, inviting people to contact him to ask why he was a traitor. The schools in this town who educate our young people have a zero tolerance policy when it comes to bullying. We expect our children and our teenagers to treat each other and their community with respect. We know, because they've told us, both privately and at the Board of Education meeting last week, that they're watching our town council members and our Board of Education members. They see what you've done, and even more than that, they see that you're unwilling to accept responsibility for those actions by issuing a public apology. You're supposed to be leaders in this town. You're supposed to be role models for both adolescent and adult community members. You're supposed to be setting examples for people to want to follow. I'm a parent, as you know, and I would be absolutely horrified if any of my children behaved in the manner that you both did at that meeting. Beyond that, all of my kids, none of whom has even passed or into middle school, would be expected, with absolutely no exceptions, to apologize for their wrongdoing and to do it with sincerity and alacrity. Mr. O'Brien Junior, last November, you posted a speech to the RTC Facebook page in which you stated, "I haven't, nor will I ever demonize a member of our community." Ever. We're all neighbors. I care about each and every one of you. Politics will always come second. Our first priority should always be to listen. Try to learn as much as possible from those around us and be respectful. So I'm asking you to listen to your own words and to respond accordingly. You and your father have both been party to demonizing Bill Oros for following his conscience and his experience in his nomination for chairperson of the Board of Education. In your own words, Mr. O'Brien Junior, if we are to accomplish anything, we have to work together. If we cannot tolerate the opinions of others, then we have no business being in the conversation. Your constituents and your community want you to work cohesively with the entire Board of Education and with each other. These adversarial politics, they don't do anything to help our town. And so again, I stand before you as a member of this community to reiterate that you both owe a public apology to Mr. Oros for the way you behaved toward him and after that meeting. An apology from you is also owed to the CI students who witnessed your behavior while attending that Board of Ed meeting as part of a school assignment. Lastly, you owe apologies to Naomi Lynn Sanders, Owen Dieterly, Ava Coonley, Dylan Patrick, and their families, who had what should have been a celebratory evening receiving their CAPS superintendents' awards for citizenship disrupted and derailed by the irresponsible and reprehensible behavior displayed that night by adults who should know better. I also request my statement be read into the minutes.
Is your statement the same?
No, it's not. But we do have half an hour for Audience of Citizens.
Yeah, we just have other people waiting.
I understand. But we're entitled to our Audience of Citizens.
I'm just asking you to be polite.
So Kathleen Brighton-Wisher, 61 Barber Drive. I am back, and I'm first going to request your full attention. Mr. Matt O'Brien Junior, I noticed last time we were here during the Audience of Citizens, you seemed to have a lost interest in what we were saying, as you were feverishly writing instead of listening. I would suggest you take note of what your peers are doing now, and that is giving us the Audience of Citizens, your constituents, your full and undivided attention. I have not heard anyone come out publicly since the last town council meeting in support of either Matt O'Brien Senior or Matt O'Brien Junior's behavior at the Board of Ed meeting or after online. Instead, I've heard a chorus of individuals and editorials lambasting your childish behavior, and even a resignation on the Republican Town Committee because of this whole fiasco. And yet, here we are, still waiting for an apology. Yes, apologizing to someone is one of the most humbling acts you can do, and yes, just like when you were a child, it is still very difficult to do. But it is the right thing to do. You still owe an apology to Mr. Oros and the students that witnessed your atrocious behavior. My sixth grade son has also made the suggestion to Matt O'Brien Junior that you may want to consider taking the digital citizenship class that all sixth graders are required to take to learn what is and is not appropriate behavior on the Internet. The ramifications of what you posted online and then reposted outside of the Republican Town Committee page are still being felt. Are you proud to have the face of one of your board members imposed with a background of the North Korean Army? Your actions did that. I will be listening and waiting for that apology. I strongly encourage you not to make us wait much longer. Our voices will only continue to get louder, and your two-year term will only continue to get shorter. And I request that these be read into the minutes.
Jessica Hall, 745 Marrow Road. Again, here I stand before you as a member of this communicate community to reiterate that you both owe a public apology to Mr. Oros for the way you behaved toward him during and after that Board of Ed meeting. An apology from you is also owed to the CI students who witnessed your behavior while attending that Board of Ed meeting as part of a school assignment. Lastly, you owe apologies to Naomi Lynn Sanders, Owen Dieterly, Ava Coonley, Dylan Patrick, and their families, who had what should have been a celebratory evening receiving their CAPS superintendents' award disrupted and derailed by the irresponsible and reprehensible behavior displayed that night by adults who should have known better. I request that this statement be read into the minutes.
Good evening. My name is Catherine Cannelli, 2293 Main Street. At the last meeting, I listened carefully to the concerns of most of the speakers. I then heard the comments made by Mr. Matt O'Brien Junior later in the meeting, and they totally missed the point. As I understand it, the situation at the Board of Education may have begun because a political decision had been made to nominate a brand-new board member as the chair. However, there was nothing political about the decision to nominate a board member who had extensive experience on the board to the position of chair. What then happened may have been motivated by politics, but the behavior and the language used was inappropriate, no matter what the political party of those two individuals. The issue continues to be nonpolitical. We all hope that those who are elected to any position will act in the best interests of our town. As citizens, it's our responsibility to be aware of what is happening and to speak up when we have a concern. At this point, it would be difficult to consider any apology as sincere. However, this concern has not gone away, and I hope that our townspeople will continue to monitor the behavior of these two individuals for the rest of their terms of office. Thank you for your attention. I would like my comments included in the minutes.
Anyone else that wants to speak?
Good evening. I'm John French, 392 Pucker Street in Coventry. Man, what a beat-up party. I've been in politics for 35 years, and this is insane. But let's start where this really should have begun. If anyone should have had an apology, it's the Republican candidates. The last mailer that the Democrats sent out was mostly a personal attack on Matt O'Brien Junior. I don't know what it is about the O'Briens, but they seem to be a scapegoat. The night of the election, Lisa Thomas sent out an email, said, "Governor Lamont just called me to ask how the election is going here. He says, 'Go, fight, win.'" She followed up, you got it, Mr. Hand, also said, she quoted that the governor said, "He also says we should make sure to beat the white nationalists." That's cute. That's really cute. So, in any case, on November 11th, on Charter TV show, Eyes on Wyndham, that I hosted, I asked for Ms. Thomas to step down. I can't believe someone with such hatred in her communications could possibly work for the good of the town. Fortunately, Nancy Pelosi and I have one thing in common, that we're both Catholics and can't possibly have hatred in our bodies. But as for Bill Oros, we tried to communicate with Bill many times. I was personally promised the night before the Board of Ed meeting by Joan, his wife, that Bill would contact me that day. He did not call me up until 2:00 in the afternoon. I tried calling a couple of times, went to voicemail. It wasn't until about 15 minutes before the Board of Ed meeting that night that we saw Bill. Mike Sobel, for whatever reason, he was in the meeting, with the superintendent, as well as Ms. Bozeli, came out. That's when we found out what Bill's intentions were, 15 minutes before the meeting. It's hard to imagine that such outcome was going to happen when during his illness, we supported him, worked hard for the Republican ticket, and the town of Coventry voted for a change in leadership. I hate to say the Democrats did not win the vote, and it wasn't because of Sobels. The Republicans won the majority all the way through. I think anger and disappointment at the Board of Ed meeting was justifiable for what had happened, since we were trying hard to, you know, talk to Bill. I couldn't imagine if the roles were reversed and the Democrats had it happen to them. Now that the election is over, I think it's time to put all this behind us and to do what the political sign said in town, whether they were Sobels or they were the Democrats. Throughout town, it said, "Coventry first." Tonight is when we should start looking at Coventry first. We should stop this thing that people deserve apologies. This is politics. It's time, it is time for, to put on the big-boy pants and the big-girl pants to realize that what society is today. It is horrid at the national level, that it's just insane. But in any case, we should not let this infiltrate Coventry, not at the local level. So we should continue on and try and do Coventry first, follow, and again, there was a thing in the emails later on, "We're going to keep an eye on you." You should keep an eye on the people that are here, all of them, because they should be put in place to protect our well-being in this community. Thank you.
No one else? I close the Audience of Citizens portion of our meeting. Matt?
I'm sure I'd move to move up Item 9E, 191031, consideration, authorization, acceptance of donation to the Coventry Police Department.
Do I have a second, please?
Second.
Thank you, John. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
We have Officer Ted Oftin-Brown here this evening.
Just a little background, there's a town council policy that any gifts to the town have to be approved by the town council. In this particular case, the person wishes to remain anonymous, so with that.
Sorry, Ted Oftin-Brown, Coventry Police Department. Thank you for hearing me tonight. Chief Palmer wanted to be here tonight, but unfortunately, he was unable to make it, so he asked me to speak on his behalf. A longtime Coventry couple approached the chief and stated their desire to donate funds to purchase equipment for the department and to express their appreciation to the members of the department and for their service to the community. This couple, as Mr. Elsesser said, stated what remained anonymous through this process. The department has been looking to enhance its firearms training program with a simmunitions system. Simmunitions is a projectile that can be fired from the handgun with modifications instead of a bullet. It's, in basic terms, it's a plastic projectile. It's used throughout the country in law enforcement training and in the military training. So it's well-used, well-known, and well-accepted. At this time, the Coventry Police Department does not have a simmunitions program, and we're moving in that direction to keep our training up. The details of the type of equipment has been discussed with the donors, and they're excited to move forward with purchasing this equipment to assist with training for the Coventry police officers. Tonight, we're requesting the town council approve to accept this donation. The cost of two simmunitions barrels is approximately $1,000. Thank you.
Very good.
Thank you.
It sounds exciting.
Do I have a motion to accept this donation?
I'll make that motion.
Okay.
Any discussion?
I just want to thank the couple.
Thank you.
He has a handout that just shows you what they look like.
Well, can you just explain a little bit about how it works? I think that'd be helpful. It's, I understand they're plastic rounds, essentially, right? Could I take that package back to me for a moment? Thank you. Okay, so what we do is, we use our department-issued handguns, and there's a conversion kit for it. So you replace the slide on the top, the slide right here, and the barrel. The wrench is just to show scale. You buy special ammunition, which comes in a regular type of jacket, regular casing that a normal bullet would be in. But instead of firing a typical bullet, it'll fire a plastic projectile. It could have a marking in it, which is like a paint, so you know where you've been hit or where somebody else has been hit when you're in a scenario. Or you can have non-marking, depending on what your goals and objectives are. The benefit with this type of system is that you can create real-life scenarios, which will produce stress on the officers, so they become better acclimated to that, and you can see how their training responds to situations. So what we would do is, we'd have real-world scenarios in this training where we would put an officer into a situation. It could be a shoot, no-shoot type of situation. And then after, we would analyze how the scenario played out, what was done correctly, what could have been improved, things of that nature.
Okay. Thank you.
And plastics versus metals also has an environmental factor.
Oh, yeah. Sure, there's lots of that. Yes.
So, these are to be, they're to be used for training purposes?
Correct.
Okay. Do the training now hold here in Coventry, or if we can?
It would be held, most likely here in Coventry. Right now, we do, we do a similar type of training. Coventry officers do a similar type of training in Willimantic right now. We utilize an old CLMP building. The system that we use now is Airsoft, which is in realistic. There's other problems with the system itself in the scenarios where the simmunitions is a more real-world type of weapon system to use during that training. We're looking right now for training locations. However, we do have an agreement with Willimantic. We have that facility down there at our disposal at no cost.
So that's one of the benefits, though, that they're actually using their weapon.
Yes.
With a different barrel.
Correct. Correct. You're using your own sidearm.
Got it.
The other benefit of simmunitions over, say, an Airsoft system, which we're using now, is you have an Airsoft magazine. It could have like 60 rounds in it, and that's not practical in real-world. Your typical magazine would maybe carry 11 rounds, so the officer would have to get used to reloading under stress in a scenario.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. That actually more full picture.
All right, so Richard had motioned, and I think all those in favor of accepting the donation to the police department, please say aye.
Aye.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And then, next on our agenda.
Ma'am Chairman, I'd like to move up, make a motion to move up 9D, 192030, revaluation status update. Michael Damacall, Assessor.
Second.
Supposed to be at 7:50, but we're running a little late.
All those in favor of moving this agenda item up, please say aye.
Aye.
Thank you. Mike, please come up.
Thank you very much, everybody. I'm excited for revaluation.
Well, you gotta smile. You must be happy.
Absolutely. So for those who don't know me, Mike Damacall, the assessor for the town of Coventry. I've been with the town for about 12 years now, minus a couple deployments. This is our third revaluation since I've been here. First one was in '09, second one was '14, this one was '19. It's a five-year cycle by state law. The purpose, of course... The purpose, of course, is for revaluation to bring equity to the three components of the town's grant list, which is motor vehicle, personal property, and real estate. The motor vehicle and personal property components of the grant list are revalued every year at 70% of fair market value. Real estate is valued every five years in accordance with Connecticut General Statute 1262, which is the revaluation of real property. The reason for the five-year cycle is that the market never stays constant, it's always changing either up or down. So, benefits, benefits, thank you, John. Some of the benefits are to correct disproportionate taxation. It adjusts value for shifts in the market. It also captures all new construction, whether it being new construction, new houses, or permits for wood decks, sheds, additions, et cetera, and it provides access to updated information with computerized property record cards and information that we make available on the lot. So we always take footprint measurements from the exterior. We have utilized in the past three revaluations data mailers. The data mailers are a huge component of any revaluation, and we've chosen to go this route. We mail them to all properties that have any physical building on them, okay, and it helps verify data. Commercial properties are done by income and expense statements, which by law have to be mailed every year. The only years they don't have to be is the year after a revaluation, but we do mail them out, and it helps keep consistency with taxpayers, and it helps them file every year so that, it's helpful for them and helpful for us. Next slide. So, data collection portion. For this revale, we really finished everything up in the end of October, beginning of November. Like I had mentioned before, it is the foundation of all revaluation projects. The valuation system is only as good as the data we collect. We mailed out approximately 4,900 data mailers to residents, out of which we got 555 returned, which is a good percentage, and the reason why I say that is because they're only to be returned if there are corrections to be made. So that being said, that shows that the data we had for properties is relatively correct. Most of them had minor changes to them, and I'll go into the next slide, I'll show you what I mean by minor changes, but it's stuff that really doesn't affect value as much as the information that we generate for the public. Collected information includes attics and basements, bedrooms and bathrooms, exterior measurements, the outbuildings on a property. Part of it, again, is the ongoing inspections. We do pick up any permits that are open, or that have been issued during the revaluation year, and we inspect sales, just to verify the data that we're using is correct in the valuation models. We inspected sales and sent out verification notices from everything from July of '18 through October 1st of '19. This is the data collection model that we use for the mailer. As you can see, we pick up the property type, the acreage, the style of the property, the exterior, including the size, type of roof, shingles, the interior information from what the walls are constructed out of, to what the flooring is, as well as the bedrooms, bathrooms, fireplaces, finished basements, and garage types. The garage types, we were really concerned with whether or not they were attached or basement garages. They only had to be returned, again, if there was a correction to be made, or if they wanted an inspection of some type. Next slide. The next is the sales analysis. After we collect all the data, what we do is, we compile building models, and there are several things we do. The town market, first of all, determines the values. We don't set the values, the town does, buyers and sellers. We don't have any preconceived estimates of value, meaning there's no magical red button that says everybody goes up 5%. What we do is, we look at the sales as they come in, and we base the values on those sales. We use verification forms, like I had mentioned, and we determine whether or not those are arm-length transactions, meaning that there's a willing buyer, a willing seller, and that there's no personal property or anything else included in the sale that we had, we don't know about. We determine land values by using vacant land sales from subdivisions, and we do what's called allocation and abstraction, which is basically taking building costs out, and the remainder is the land value. We determine building value and depreciation using models like Marshall-Swift, and we develop our computer-based CAMA, which is Computer Assisted Mass Appreales Systems, with that information on the market. Valuation, there's three approaches. Every system in the state of Connecticut is based on a cost model. That cost model is developed by using sales. So we use the sales-to-cost and the income-and-expense approach. Income-and-expense is, again, is for commercial property. Sales approach is what we use on all residential properties, including vacant land. We only use comparable properties, we do not compare non, we don't use capes to value ranches, or split levels to value colonials. The income and expense that we collect from taxpayers is used on all of our commercial properties. We do try to use all three years to determine what the actual market rents are for those properties, and that's how we do the valuation. Next slide. So, one of the things that we do do is, every year, we report to office policy and management of what usable sales are in town. And what that does is, that basically gives us our sales ratio information. So we go into a revaluation, we have an idea of where we need to go with values, and this slide here is just a representation of where we needed to go prior to the beginning of the revaluation. And if you look, our condominiums were about 62% of value. Now, when I say 62%, the standard, again, is 70. So we want to be at 70% of fair market value by state law. So, looking at that, our condominiums were undervalued going into revaluation. Our vacant land, which is anything that does not have any type of structure on it, was a little over-assessed, okay, based on sales. Our commercial is a little tough, because we don't have a lot of commercial property in town, so we don't have a huge amount of sales to look at statistics. But, as a generality, we were a little bit undervalued on commercial property. That was really in our retail, in our apartments, not as much in the smaller stuff in the office space. And then, single-family as a whole, we were undervalued, we were at 61%. So this is a graphic representation of after revaluation and what the assessments did in town. And what you see here is, anything in red had an increase in assessment, okay? Anything that was white or blue was either a no-change, yes, it's in your packet, and it's not colored, I apologize.
And this screen has it, on the projector, it's brown.
The, this slide is basically, what I wanted to show is, if you look at the statistics, you're seeing all of our vacant land are large lots, that had no changes or stayed the same, or, excuse me, or decreased in value. And that's exactly what our statistics showed. Our statistics showed that our large lots of vacant land should have either stayed the same or gone down in value. Now, of course, there are always exceptions to that, because things change constantly, and sometimes our information changes, but for the most part, that's what this represents. Next slide. This is our median sales. This is the changes from prior to revaluation, which is our October 1st '18 grant list, and our October 1st '19 grant list, which we'll sign. As you see here, I need to give you the breakdown by median sale price, price per square foot, and median price per foot. Now, I talked about statistics. Everything we do for a revaluation is statistical-based. The reason why we use median is because we want to look at the median, we don't want to look at the average. And the reason why is, what I do is, I take the median, and then I look at the outliers, and to figure out why are those outliers. So, when we look at our valuation system, that is what we use, and as you can see, you know, our splits, our raised ranches, our capes, our colonials, they're all in that $160 to $170 range. Our raised ranches definitely saw the highest per-square-foot value. It's what the market is dictating. I believe that it's affordable housing. I believe that that's one of those.
Can't do everything at once.
I have. Hey, kids? Cassette! Those are called cassette tapes. That's how we did it. Yeah. This is also a historical presentation.
Is there a reservation? Yeah.
It's getting the job done, though. And, of course, our contemporaries in our antiques are some below the prices per town. That's typical at any town. They're typically the, I guess, the least desirable properties in town, and that's what the markets are showing. Next slide. This is, again, a graphical representation of exactly that, showing that, what you'll see is, on the left-hand side, which is the green bars, you'll see that that is where we started, and the next bar would be where we ended up. And that's exactly, again, what the statistics showed. You know, statistics showed that we were about 10% low on residential properties, and that's what this is basically saying, is that, you know, looking at those statistics, this is where we started, at what price per foot median, and this is where we ended up. Next one. So what I did here was, I gave you a summary, a change for residential property, and actually, the entire grant list, by type, okay? And this is just to let you see exactly what percentage each of the groups of properties went up total in value, percentage change, and the difference in value. As you can see, residential vacant land was a very small increase, which statistics showed. Single-family was about 5%. Multifamily, which is 2, 3, and 4-family, we don't have a lot of sales for those, but again, that's about the same percentage. 4-family is a little bit skewed, and the only reason why is because we have about six of them in town. So the selection is very small when it comes to statistics. Condominiums, they got probably the smallest increase, and the reason why is because a lot of our condominiums are brand-new. So they're the, when you look at the valuation of them, the 55 and over communities, they were, a lot of them are brand-new, so the valuation of those did not change too much, but Merrill Road did see about a 10% to 12% increase. Single-family with in-law. I want to point that out, because that was a definite increase in value. What we saw that was, we were a little bit low in 2014, so there was definitely a shift in value, where we had to make up the difference with those types of properties. Again, group homes, vacant land with outbuildings, commercial properties, PA 490 went down. Part of the reason for the PA 490 reduction was, is we did have quite a few properties either apply for split or subdivision. Some of them sold, so they came out of the PA 490 program for that reason, so that's part of the reason for the reduction for 490. Our town is still made up of a large amount of preserved land, so, but we did see a reduction in that. And then, of course, the overall increase in the real estate grant list was about 5%. Next. So, I wanted to talk about taxes. So I know there's a lot of concern, or there is concern, I should say, about taxes and revaluation. So, I want to start off by saying, revaluation and my office have nothing to do with taxation, okay? Taxation is a component of the budget, and the only thing that my office does is value property. We are responsible for ownership of property and valuation of property. So what we did here was, we wanted to just show a tax calculation, and as you can see, there is no budget yet. There is even a start-up of budget process yet. Most of the, most of us are still putting together a budget for the town manager. Budget talk typically doesn't come into account until January, February. So, just looking at this, we put together, determine total expenses. Total expenses is basically what the levy is for the town, or the budget, okay? So we're using a typical of $40,000 expenses, okay? From the levy, we got to deduct grants and local revenue, and what we're saying is, that's about $10,000 in our mock scenario, okay, or about one-quarter of it, which brings us down to a total levy of $30,000. Using the total grant list, okay, of $975,000, it equals 1 mil $975. At a $30,000 assessment, 975 gives us a mil rate of 30.77. And basically, what this is saying is, is that the change in assessment affects the mil rate, okay? It does not change the amount of taxes you're going to pay, or doesn't pay the amount of taxes, revenue generated by the town. So people who got an increase in assessment, it does not reflect an increase in taxation. I really want to make sure that the taxpayers understand that, okay? One does not correlate with the other right now, okay?
So, let me, Amanda was going to take this slide, she's not here. But, so obviously, what, the bottom line is, is that if every property went up by the same value, then the mil rate would go down by a proportional amount, and then we add in the confusion of what the next fiscal year is. But the reality is, is that some people have been underpaying taxes, and some people have been overpaying taxes. So, there's no one statement, but if your value went up, it doesn't mean that you're automatically going to have an increase in taxes. If your value went down, there's a good likelihood that you're going to be paying less in taxes. So, when people see an increase in their value, you should ask yourself the first question, "Do I think I could sell my house for that?" That's the real issue. Is it a fair market value? The rest of it works out over time, in terms of, well, we're through the budget process, what other aid we get, you know, what happens to our state grants, which are a significant portion of our budget, all those things work out. But just because your property value went up, you know, obviously, if it goes up higher, higher than the average, there's a likelihood that your tax bills are going to go up. If it's lower than the average, there's a likelihood your taxes will go down. But it's back to the whole issue of who's paying the fair share. Now, depending on the amount of that change, your car taxes will also likely go down, because the mil rate will go down. So you have to look at not just your house, but understand that it's so complicated right now, that your real question is, "Do I think my house is valued right?" That's the question that you have to ask, and we'll get into, if you don't think that's true, what you do. But again, very complicated right now, don't look at one number and make assumptions on it, and people are already doing that on Facebook, and it's just wrong, because your car taxes also play into it, the more cars you have, but it's likelihood, because our grant list is going up, that our mil rate will softly go down. This is not a huge change. Last time, we actually, the property values went down, and then the mil rate had to go up, just to make up for the same amount of revenue. It's just math.
It's just an equalization, that's all it is. Next slide? Okay. So, John had talked about this, but this is, again, just a representation of, we have a very small portion of our grant list is commercial industrial property, but this is a percentage of increase and a percentage of change in both dollar amounts and total grant list amounts. For the '18 grant list, which was our last signed grant list based on the 2014 revaluation, okay, and our 2019 unsigned grant list. Now, again, there are a few things that are going to play into this, one being our personal property and motor vehicle, our personal property and motor vehicle lists are not valued yet, so that will play into this, but this is the residential component of it.
So, just one note, I know, again, in that Facebook world that people seem to love, people are complaining about how commercial we're becoming.
This is our overall grant list. And if you were to take the pie, this is the tiny slice that Coventry has that's commercial and industrial. It really only makes up about 5% of our grant list. And working in other municipalities, that is a very small amount.
So we're in the bottom 15 in the state. In the state. Right up there was Roxbury, Kent. So, yes, everyone admits, taking the house out of Cullen Farms and the landscape, including the trees down, it's a big change. But 5% of our whole town is, is commercial industrial. And of that 5%, most of it is Eversource, the gas company, which is, most of the gas company you already see because it's the big gas line, Duke Energy, and then Connecticut Natural Gas, and Frontier. So, you know, our, of that, in that little pie, is all our utilities, too. So it's, it's really small. Even our neighbors like Bolton have, have much bigger than that.
They do. So, yes, they do.
And all that information, if you want to do that, you can go to the connecticutcirc.org, and they have the grant list information for every town in the state, and you can look it up.
So last portion of it, again, is we're going to do the informal hearing process. So John had kind of talked about, what I do is valuation. So my office is always available to any taxpayer, whoever has any issue, of course. But what we want to make sure is that the revaluation process is transparent, okay? The information is there for the public. Between my office, the internet, and the company, okay, you can get anything that you want as far as the valuation process. So the informal hearing process started about a week and a half ago. Notices were mailed out on the 4th. They hit mail boxes between Friday and Saturday. The hearing process itself started the following Wednesday, and they're going to be running through this Thursday, okay? Now, go ahead.
Is it too late for someone to come forward?
It is never too late. So if anybody has an issue, my office is always open, and I will make sure that I will address any issues that any taxpayer has, okay? So just remember that. We hire a company to come in and do a revaluation, because I don't have the staff or the time to revalue every property in town. But the truth is, and this is by law, and this is by court cases, I'm responsible for the grant list. Every value that's set is mine. I'm the one who signs my name to it, and I'm the one who verifies it by state law, so anyway.
So there is an end to that one.
There is.
So, well, the informal hearings, and, you know, we may end up a makeup session if we get snowed out tomorrow or something, but you have to sign your grant list.
By January 31st. I was going to get to that.
So there is a deadline.
There is. So valuation review is necessary. Inspections, of course, we'll do inspections if anybody wants them. And we've had probably about 20 people request inspections so far. So it hasn't been, you know, we haven't had too many requests for inquiry inspections. I'm going to try to get change notices out by December 31st. I don't want to mail them out for Christmas. I know everybody's laughing, and I don't know why, but no, we don't want to mail them out for Christmas. And what I'll get into, the next slide, is by nailing them out by December 31st, it gives taxpayers plenty of time. I don't sign my grant list until typically the last week of January. Until I sign the grant list, I can review anything, okay? By Connecticut Journal Statute. So that gives people a good, solid four weeks to make sure that if something's been missed, that we can address it, okay? And then from there, if they still feel that I have not addressed their concerns, okay, they always have the option of going to the Board of Assessment Appeals. As long as they do not file for an extension, which I never have, and I'm not planning on it, our Board of Assessment Appeal applications are due no later than February 20th of 2020.
Says 19th.
Oh, mistake on my part. It is not 19, it is 2020. And February 20th is the official date. So if they are looking for VAA applications, they're available online. They will be available on January 1st online, and they'll be available in my office. I try to address any concern prior to that. So again, if they feel that the company or myself have not addressed their concerns, VAA applications are due no later than February 20th, and they will meet in March of 2020. That is a definite mistake. So I just want to get real quick, and it's the information available to the public. So our website, okay, has a link from the front page that goes to my page, which has assessment changes by street, by name, by address, waterfront. I broke it down by every way I could possibly think about it, and I would want to look at it. It also has all of the sales information, as well as copies of the change notices. So if people wanted a copy of theirs or somebody else's change notices, because it is freedom of information, they can print it right from the website. Also included now, that is a link to our GIS website. John, can you go to the next slide, please? The GIS website is here, which is www.treecity.org. On my site, it actually takes you directly to MapExpress. We do have two GIS products, but unfortunately, Prog's product is in the middle of an update. Their product won't be officially online until January, so the reason why we're using the MapExpress is because that gets updated nightly, okay? So any taxpayer that wants to look at any information about assessments on GIS should use the MapExpress link, and it is directed right from my page to there. And on the website, it does say that on the website when you go, it says that MapExpress is updated nightly, okay? It also takes you to Vision Government Solutions. That's included in our contract for one year. That also has all the information out there, okay? So if somebody wants to look up sales or wants to look up somebody's property, they can go to Vision's website also.
Very good.
And that is the conclusion of our presentation. Thank you very much for having me. I really do appreciate it, and I hope everybody have a happy holiday. I do. I know revaluation is a tough thing sometimes, but, you know, the state, they mandate me soon to these things, so. Does anybody have any questions for me or any concerns that I could ask?
Let me ask back to some people, though, they want to be in touch with you, so I'll let them know that.
Anytime. We run an open office, so anything I can do, I will.
Thank you for coming.
Thanks so much for coming.
Really my pleasure.
Clearly done. Better feeling, too.
My pleasure.
Are you or John able to email us that PowerPoint so we'll have the color slide?
Yeah, right after. You can get it, too.
Yes. I'll be able to, John's operating first name.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Thank you.
Thanks for coming in, Mike.
My pleasure.
Keep going.
Yep.
I'm sure I move to approve the minutes on the member 12.
Do I have a second?
Second.
I'm going to beat you out every time, John.
Richard makes the second.
Richard, I think you beat Matt. I didn't even try. But I beat the second man.
All right. Anybody have any changes to our November 12 minutes?
I will. And I also have something I'd like to do, and it does talk about the minutes. So as, as we now have two members with very similar names on the council, I think, I'd like to propose that in all of the minutes and all of the official communications, that with their name, anytime their name is mentioned, that include, now I'm looking at the name tags in front of them, that is backwards right now, that include the designation junior or senior every single time the name Matthew D. O'Brien is mentioned, or, you understand? So, so be exactly, just for clarity, just so we know which one we're talking about. I think it would just helpful as we look back on this time during the council and you see who did what and who was there.
I would also, because we now have two leases on the council, that would be helpful.
Lisa D. and Lisa C.
That would probably get it done. At least a T.
Sorry.
T.
It's okay.
Yeah, it works.
Okay.
So just as a general.
And John, John, just to say, he's J.O.A.J.
No.
Not J.O.A.J., he's.
You're J.O.A.J. I'm J.O.N.
And that comes up in these minutes.
Yes, yeah, it does. So I also have some other things there. So just going down from the top, under two remarks of retiring counsel, let's see, about one, two, three, four, five, six line down at the very end of the line, I think the A probably shouldn't be there grammatically.
Increased only two tenths of a mile.
Yeah. So it increased only A, two tenths of a mile. The third line up from the bottom of that same paragraph, I think there should be an apostrophe in the word managers in the middle of the line. Managers, assistant. And the very bottom line on the first page, I think the word privilege is misspelled in the middle of the line.
Yes.
Turning the page, and I guess, one, two, three, fourth line down, I think, yes, serviced should be served. He has served on the council for many terms.
Let's hope so.
Yes, exactly. Next paragraph, second line towards the end, it says, "He noted is very proud." I'd like to say, "He noted he is very proud," so insert the word he of the, ah, yes, and this, this got here. So continuing that sentence, "He noted," and now with the correction, "he is very proud of the," I'd want to take out that word councils, and just have accomplishments, the, and then spell council correctly next, that it's an obvious one, that the council has made as, and then a comma after the word made, as well as the things they have started, I think that gets to it. Next one, continuing down a couple lines, the line just below where it says sustainable CT at the end of the line, I think, I want to say, I'm sorry, who are your preferences supporting for this process? Achieving, I think that word should be achieving fiscal accountability instead of achieve.
Which one is it?
That is one, two, three, four, five, six line down from the paragraph that starts Jonathan Hand at the very end of the line, the second to last word.
It should be achieving.
Achieving instead of achieve. Two lines down from that, in the middle of the line, right after it says two-year term, it says the annual average mil increase. I wanted to have it say average annual, just switch those two words. So the average annual mil increase was only 0.1 mils. Third line up from the bottom of that same paragraph, near the beginning of the line, just spell Joan Lewis's last name correctly. It needs an S, if that's not obvious. And at the very bottom of that page, I'd like to insert, in the second to last word on the page, I'd like to insert an apostrophe to indicate possessive for council's goals.
Before we leave that page, I had a couple.
Jump in.
The second paragraph down, like maybe 12 lines down, it starts with, on the left, the ad hoc senior housing alternatives committee to, it should be begin work.
Yep, I like that. Very good.
The next paragraph down, Mike Sobel said, "Congratulations," and I think it needs an S usually to say congratulations. Six lines down in that same paragraph, in the middle, it's, the sentence starts, "He urged them to listen to the citizen volunteers."
Sounds better.
Two more lines down, I would say, "Girls softball deserves an apostrophe at the end." Get inclusive. That's what I had for that page. Anybody else have anything else on that page before John?
Go ahead.
Lisa Thomas?
We're just getting to the nitty gritties here. In Julie's comments, the third line, there's just a has missing, as long as she has.
Oh, instead of have.
That's it. At the top of the page, second line, the school readiness, the R in readiness should be capitalized.
Okay, back to you, John Hand, if you want to carry on.
Yeah, actually, no, just reading that where I saw it. Right back to where she was with school readiness council. I believe the name of the next entity where it says she's co-president of the collegeship, Coventry Scholarship Foundation. I think the word trust is at the end of that. I think it's the Coventry Scholarship Foundation Trust. Do you know?
Doesn't matter.
No, really.
Okay.
Is this what somebody said?
All right, fine. No, moving on. I'm not married to it. I just read it and said, hey, that's not the name. Anyway.
That is your present?
I don't know. Okay, not a problem. Moving on.
I think you're actually right, but I don't think it was said.
You're right. Understood. I understand the, you're seeing quoting and being accurate or whatever. Anyway, so flipping to the next page.
Wait.
Oh, you have more. Oh, go ahead. Go ahead, I'm sorry.
On page three.
Three?
Yeah, we're on page three.
No, you're on two.
No, I'm just now flipping to page three.
Hold on. Oh, you're still on the one that's the last paragraph that starts Julie.
Julie Glaser, right.
Okay.
That's okay, you can, you have, go ahead, if you have one on that page, jump in.
Sure. In the second paragraph, Lisa C.'s comments.
Uh-huh.
In the second line, there's just, the first word should be had. And in the fourth paragraph, John noted a momentary lapse, not his memory in council. It's just missing an N on John. And then, he said, "It is a pleasure for him to serve."
Anybody else have anything on that page?
So the last line of that same paragraph with John's name misspelled, it's actually the second to last line at the very end, it says, "He thanked everyone for their service." I think it should be thanked, add an ED.
It says thanks. Thanks everyone.
He thanks everyone.
Thanks everyone.
Okay, you know what? My little carrot rolled over it. I apologize.
Okay. Anybody else on that page? Page four.
Anyone? Anyone? The very last paragraph, third line down right in the middle, it says, "She hopes to continue supporting," it says out police, I think it should be our police. And then the next line below that, the apostrophe towards the beginning of the line, the apostrophe in girls softball should be moved to after the S. That's all I have on that page.
It's just, the word moved is twice in Matt Senior's motion under item number five.
Do it.
You want it to move.
At the end of line.
Or you want it to move twice?
Which, which one should be stricken? First one.
No, the second.
Eight?
Wow.
All right. I had in the last paragraph, in the second line up from the bottom, working together as one council and thanked again.
Thank the public.
I feel like there's one word missing there. Do you see it, Lisa?
Which major? And which Lisa?
It's you, Lisa. It's right there.
Page four.
Thanks.
Thanks.
Somebody.
Everybody.
Working together as a council, thanked.
I have to look at my Rambo marks. I know.
Everyone again.
The voters, the guests, the electorate.
Okay. And the last page of these minutes. Go ahead, John.
I have one in the first paragraph, third line up from the bottom, near the middle, it says, "Tow," the tow staff, it should be tow, just add an N, that's all I have on that page.
Anybody?
Yes. In my comments, this actually goes to accuracy and what I would have said, but you can certainly check what I submitted. In my, in the third sentence of my comments, which starts in the second line, she noted that during her prior term in 2005, which is not accurate, I wasn't on council in 2005. It would be 2007.
Isn't it 1570?
No, I first served in 2007, and that's what I was referring to.
Okay.
Actually, no, you're right, it should be during her prior, what I had said was during my previous service from 2007 to 2016. And I, I know my typed comments are attached, but I know I wasn't on council in 2005. And so what I was saying was, I was summarizing what had happened when I served previously from 2007 to 2016.
Actually, your remarks have, I don't know where they, it's.
Like with 2005?
You did.
Geez, well, that's wrong.
All right, so.
Should that be correct, I mean.
You can make a clarification.
I'd like to clarify that because that's incorrect, and my apologies if I.
So 2007 to 2016 is what you'd like it to read?
That's what it should read, yeah, that's how it should clarify.
So there should be a parenthetical correction. S I C 2007.
And then also in those comments. Whatever to make it, I don't want it to be misleading, so whatever needs to be done. Well, then maybe this is how I wrote it too, but protecting the health of Coventry and Eagleville Lake, it should be lakes, they're two separate lakes. That's it.
Anybody else have anything on this page?
I would say that in the second paragraph that starts with Matt O'Brien Senior wants to congratulate the returning member, we need an S for members more than one of us.
How about the returning?
Retuning member, yeah, that's, that's good. Retuning.
I'm just, in my comments.
Yep.
What I said is my motivation when I first ran for town council in 2005 began with my advocacy for our schools and my rural character. I wasn't saying that I was on council then, I was saying that's when I first ran. So I was just trying to summarize, I was just trying to talk about the motivation for being involved in the town, so maybe that doesn't need to be clarified. I mean, it does need to be clarified, my comments that I wrote are accurate, what's in the minutes is not.
During her first run.
Or what, my motivation for running is what I was trying to. When I first ran for council, that's why.
Hasn't changed. I meant to have it reflect more Lisa's.
I just want, I don't want people to see the minutes and think that.
Okay, are we good with these minutes for now? All those in favor of approving the minutes with the noted changes or corrections, please say aye.
Aye.
Thank you.
Move to approve the minutes of November 18.
Second. Okay, any changes, additions, or corrections? I think there were less than that.
I have some corrections, and they're, they're, I think pretty similar throughout during the comments of, during the comments and audience of citizens. There are just this missing words. So on page two of the minutes.
Just one on page one, if you would stop there first.
Sure.
Bottom of this, the last full paragraph, fourth, up from the bottom, says three mile ruck, I'm assuming that's a run.
No, actually, Peter explained that there's a thing they run with, like a rucksack on. They call it a three mile walk, and it's a three mile ruck.
Okay. Calling your pack.
I have to stand corrected, there you go.
While we're still on the first bit, okay.
No, but you're, I'm. Who's on page one?
I just have one simple thing on page one, under three audience of citizens, third line up from the bottom in that first paragraph, it says with civility, I believe there should be a period after the word civility. Just a, you know.
Verbal. I'm not funny at words.
I know, I'm not either.
Okay, I'm sorry.
We're all entitled to our opinions, we should be expressing them with civility.
Am I in the right minutes?
Yeah. Period, he's saying.
If you look third, it's, it's the second line of the remarks, but the third line, if you include the parenthetical below it.
I got it, ready.
Okay. And then Lisa, you were going to point out that recurring thing.
Well, it's not exact, I might have to go one by one.
All right.
Okay, so on page two, in Emma Eaton's comments. At the end of the first line, what should have been a celebratory evening. So it's missing the A, became an embarrassing. Still in Emma Eaton's comments, the fourth line from the end. All of the high school CI students who had to witness. So it says students to had to witness, it's students who had to witness what happened in that room.
So on that one, I'm just jumping in because I also had that, but I corrected it with a that, students that had to witness, so either, it's an either or.
Do you want to get into a grammar argument with an English major?
No, no, I don't.
Okay, mystery comments.
Okay, I guess I, I guess I know to whom we should refer this to.
That was good, that was just.
Thank you.
And there are similar corrections in Robin Gallagher's comments, so three lines up, students who had to witness, and I think this was probably just copying and pasting. Students who had to witness what happened in that room. That's it for me on page two.
Okay, I have a couple more on page two, there where we are. In Robin Gallagher's comments, the second paragraph from the bottom, if you count, it's kind of smack dab in the middle, under where it says Board of Education, after the word public apology, I see a, I can't see because I wrote on it, is that a comma or a period, but I think it should just not be there. Whatever punctuation is there.
It's a comma.
She requested a public apology be made by the council members who participated.
Are you removing a comma?
I know.
I, well, you know, if it's not, if it shouldn't be there, then it shouldn't be there. So anyway, so there's that one, and then in the very last line of the page, near the end, it says.
How'd you be made?
And demands a public apology be, it says be made, and it should be made to the council members, et cetera, et cetera. That's all I have on the rest of that page.
Back to page three. You're off topic.
Move to the sorry.
Yep, okay.
Same corrections in Kelly Sobel's comments, a public apology be made again.
So they all read the same piece of paper, are you sure it's not wrong on the piece of paper that they submitted?
I went, I actually went to, I, I went to look at the submitted comments, we can look again.
I don't mind changing it.
To cross reconcile it, and also the same correction for students who, which would be.
Third line down.
On three.
You're looking at the first paragraph of the page, no, 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 you're in Kelly Sobel's. Okay. He's looking at it, there's one at the very top paragraph of the page.
Just fix them all. Yes, I agree with that one too. Okay, so I think, yeah, CI students who had to witness. And the same corrections in Jessica Hall's comments, so that would be. Again, these three lines up in hers, all of the high school CI students who had to witness what happened in that room. And I think there was a B instead of, there's two.
There's a B in each of Kelly Sobel's and Jessica Hall's, in the middle.
Yeah, so four lines down in Jessica's comments, and demands a public apology be made by the council members who participated in this behavior. And then my eyes just started to close.
All right, page four. Anybody have anything?
It's got to be something.
Shockingly, no. Shockingly.
All right, page five.
I have one.
Go ahead.
And, and the very last bullet of the page, near the end of the first line of that bullet, where it says the C H S wall, I think it should be plural, walls.
And we needed a senior at the end.
Say that again?
We need a senior at the end of that.
Oh, well, yes, now, yeah, yep.
And on the bullet above it too.
I'm, of course, fine with those things.
Page six.
So I have down in the very last paragraph on the page, the hydrolyte treatment survey. I have, it's my understanding there's more than one ventic barrier in the, in the lake, there are several areas that have them, so it needs to be plural, so third line down in the middle of the line, it says removal of the ventic barrier, it should be plural, I believe. You're giving me the look like you're not sure.
I think there's really other one.
Is there only one area in the lake that has that? I could have sworn in my reading of the study.
They talked about multiple, there's more than one.
Okay, so that's, so making that plural, the first time it appears on that line in this, remove, and then Dr. Corman has offered to remove them instead of it on the next line. And then one, two, three lines below that, the line starts ventic barrier, it should be plural again.
Same page all the way up to top, number two, the, go to the right, it says C E D E E P.
Oh, yeah.
Didn't catch my eye. Okay, everybody, page six. Page seven.
I got nothing.
First paragraph, second line, we have done a good job to identify, oh, I did, maybe that's, never mind, I think it's correct, maybe I just wrote, made it wrong that night when I did this, council supervisor.
Sure was you and not me.
I think we have done a good job.
Says Matthew O'Brien.
Okay, never mind.
Anything else on page seven? And our last page, page eight. Everybody in favor of approving these minutes with the said corrections, please say aye.
Aye.
All right, our consent agenda, do I have a motion to approve our consent agenda? Thank you, Lisa Thomas, and the second.
Second.
Thank you, Matthew O'Brien Jr. Is there anything anyone wants to remove tonight from our consent agenda?
Do we add things?
No, but we don't have to have long discussions about them. All right, all those in favor of approving the consent agenda as presented, please say aye.
Aye.
All right, reports. I will try to go through this quickly, we have a lot on our agenda tonight. I attended the CCM convention, informative like always. I sat in on a seminar about housing so that I could learn about our elderly housing study or what the state laws are, so I have something that I can share with the town manager that can be attached to a future agenda, and or I can share it with the senior housing study committee. We had a L E C C, our local emergency coordinating committee, on the first Thursday of the month, and our fire merger study committee is planning on coming to talk to us, hopefully during the month of January at one of our meetings, to let us know where they stand on theirs.
And when their next meeting?
The first Thursday in January, which is going to be the second. Christmas in the Village happened, I was not able to attend, but I understand it was a great event put on by.
Village Partnership, Lions.
And the Village Partnership, right? Okay.
With a lot of support from our police officers and firefighters working on traffic and D P W.
Yep. And Matt Junior was there and he had spoken at the event. So that's it for my reports this evening, is there anyone else that would like to report on anything?
Just really, really quick, Lisa, Matt Senior, John and I were at the Reach Across America ceremony on Saturday, it was wonderful. Moving as always, I had a great turnout.
And the weather held off.
The weather, the weather did hold off, and, and many thanks to the, to the cemetery commission and to John and our town staff for helping keep that event go so well.
And the fire department.
And the fire department.
Yeah, oh, you mentioned that, sorry.
Any other council members have a report?
I have a few items. I'll just echo your comments on Christmas in the Village, fantastic event for all ages, there was so much to do, good luck getting it all going everywhere in only four hours, good luck with that, because I tried and no. So I, again, thank you, shout out to Coventry Lions, the Village Partnership, and all those who made it possible. Moving more recent to today or tonight, I want to talk about briefly PJ Day Movie Night at Coventry High School, which I just recently attended, what amazing event that was right here in Coventry, the home of PJ Day. Kids and adults had a great time, and there were activities kind of for both, and, and it really hit me there, what a generous community we have. You know, there, there's a, something that started very humbly and has now grown to something that is really something to be proud of for our community and the state as a whole as it grows, so it's just awesome, and I'd be remiss if I didn't point out that we loved, and especially my younger daughter loved, the sing-along where all the kids got to go on stage and sing, and it was just great, Christmas carols and things like that, it was great. A few more details on Reach Across America, it was very moving, a very fitting tribute, it was an honor to be there with my fellow council members that could attend, such a heartfelt tribute to our fallen heroes. Congratulations to the members of the cemetery commission for putting together such a successful event, and thank you to the fire department for displaying the flag over Route 31, it really set the tone for everyone arriving at the event, it was, that was amazing, and thank you to John Elsesser and the other town staff who supported this effort, and that also goes out thanks to the, all the emergency staff, you know, the EMS, the fire, all of that. I'd also like to give a kudos to the three young ladies from Coventry High School Chorus who performed such a fantastic rendition of our national anthem, that was, that was also very fitting, very moving, and very well executed.
Acapella too, right?
Yeah, acapella, yeah, it was just right there, it was just them, and it was great. It was a very well attended event, and it was so nice to see the Girl Scouts and the Boy Scouts both attend and actively participate in, in this event, so they're, they're getting that kind of lesson and, and, you know, that type of thing, and a big thank you to Hannah Cole and the C H S band for a job well done, and a special shout out to the trumpet players that performed taps and echo taps, this is near and dear to me, because I performed taps at various tributes in town, Memorial Day and stuff like that during high school, and they did a really, really great job. Touching lastly, I have heard from a couple of folks about the revaluation hearing process, and that it was, it has been, their experiences with it have been very professional and fair, and so I encourage people, if you get that thing and you looked at it and it doesn't make sense to you, make an appointment and go see them, as we heard during the thing tonight, it's, they can help you. I will pause.
Well, we weren't using them. For decades.
It's a two-taper. I'll get you a video.
I remember that thing.
And so my, my last thing I'll bring up is echoing, maybe, Julie's comments on the CCM convention, it was a real honor to be there when the town got presented with their silver certification, one of only 14 towns in the state for sustainable C T, that's something our town should be very proud of, and it has brought a lot of things to surface that will not only be good for sustainability, but they really generally save the town money, so that's awesome. So it's an honor to be there to help receive that award, along with John and Julie, and as well, I attended that workshop on the, on the housing, you know, how to develop low-income housing and housing alternatives to town, and it really was very eye-opening. I know you said you found it that much, and I just want to echo that as well. That's all I have.
Thank you. I, I kind of want to say this on behalf of the council, maybe you were going to say something, but I just wanted to recognize Tim Ackards lasted his wife. Tim was also at Reach Across America, and I don't know how he managed to, to hold himself together there. But, you know, again, it's, it doesn't matter what letter is next to your name, he, he and his family have just been incredible for our community and been supportive of the community, and they're at everything and, and contributing to everything, and I just wanted to recognize that publicly.
Yes, it's great to us.
I was going to say something, it's fine.
Do you want to add?
No, I'm fine, I think we need to, I mean, it's after nine o'clock, and we have five pages of agenda to get through, so.
We're going to have a delayed opening at school tomorrow, everybody's snow dancing right now, sorry.
But Teddy will be missed, absolutely.
All right. So we're good with council members. Finance committee, Matt, do you have a quick report?
Why don't I do this? I'll pick some of the things that are in here and I'll actually email this to everybody, if that's okay, instead of going through every little detail. You can read the reports, you know, the finance reports, you've probably got all that already. So let's see. We did look up. So I'm just going to go where we went. We did talk about the Board of the Preschool Fund, just because members weren't all entirely certain as to the funding and how it works and the number of grant money. We did request some additional information from Amanda, I'm not going to get into all that. We did talk also about the board's tuition fund account. We had further questions about those as well, which Amanda's going to do a little bit of research. And of course, I'm cutting through this, sorry. We did talk about the town's LUCIP balances and right now we have about $105,000 currently available. We're expecting an additional $100,000 from the state in the spring, once the state bonding package is approved. I think John said that there's probably $220,000 in approved projects, so. Amanda also brought us four years' worth of data about the disposal of garbage and recycling fees. There's been a dramatic change in the last two years. We used to get $25 per ton for recycling and now we're paying $30 per ton for recycling. And we've also been charged a fee for dirty recycling, so the change was fairly dramatic. This fiscal year '20, this year when we're in, is going to be about 13% higher for cost for recycling than it was the year before, but it's 44% higher than it was for fiscal year '18. So you have to keep an eye on that account. We went over the results of the bond offering and monies that might be available for other uses. I'm not going to get into all that. We did talk about the money for lake management. So Amanda created a report that showed the expenditures the town has made since 2015. She reported that since 2015, the town has spent $60,217 for FANTworth expenditures, $160,670 for hydraulics expenses, $14,504 for general monitoring, and $42,848 has been transferred to pay for the late gate and dock purchase. There's currently $66,000, this is for budgeting. So there's $66,346 remaining in the account. If the hydraulics program remains the same as last year, the first payment will be for $63,200. This year, the first treatment was performed in late July. And we also talked briefly about the fact that the state has set up a new program where they're charging boat license fees that will be dedicated to paying for the costs of towns fighting invasive plants. So we're hoping that the town may, can work to maximize any funds that might be available under that plan. Talked about the Assessor, I think Mike's done a good enough job, we don't need to talk about that. And then we went over the CGA contract briefly and we actually met together, so I don't have to talk about any of that.
That's later on our agenda. All right, thank you. Does anybody have any questions of Matt Senior in our finance meeting?
I'm sorry if I cut it too short in any place.
It was way too short.
It was way too short.
The minutes are included with tonight's agenda. If you review them. Matt Junior, sorry, Matt Junior Steering Committee?
Steering discussed our recommendations for appointments and reappointments to the Coventry Housing Authority, Water Pollution Control Authority, HUD Housing and Human Rights Commission in the wetlands, and Senior Housing Alternative Study Committee. We'll be approving those shortly, hopefully. Disillusion of the Insurance Advisory Committee, the committee hasn't been active and the town no longer uses an agent broker for insurance since we went to CERMA, so we...
KERMA.
KERMA. We also now have a finance director and a school business manager. So the committee's main task was to determine risk levels. And with the risk management audit that was recently performed, which went well, it seems like we should be doing audits on a regular basis, which should be all we need, correct? Steering's recommending that the insurance advisory committee be dissolved. It's on the agenda tonight under 9G. Steering directed the town clerk to notify any remaining members of the Personnel Appeals Board that that committee has been dissolved as a result of the adoption of the amended personnel's rules, personnel rules. And going forward, the committee will be removed from the monthly report. We're working on a new policy for the interaction of individual town council members with town staff. Our goal will be to enable members to freely ask questions of town staff if questions are quickly addressable, but we'll suggest that most questions that require research or study be directed through the town manager, who will be able to not only determine the correct department to address, but to ensure that the work is completed in a timely manner with minimal disruption to town staff. Mr. Hand also would like to ensure that all information gathered in this manner is disseminated appropriately to all council members, so we are all on the same page and I agree. We'll be looking at the repeal of Town Ordinance Article 4, Section 38-91 through 38-96 due to changes in state law. That will fall under 9B tonight. Bud Myers will be joining us at Steering this coming Monday to discuss modifications to ordinances for inspections, permits, and open burning. We've taken up discussions relating to the takeover of Avery Shores Road and the implications of that undertaking. I think we're looking for a defined repair program from the association and hopefully we'll receive that shortly. I think we're looking at a January meeting, John?
Yeah. We thought we'd start by having Rich Roberts, one of our town attorneys, come in to give kind of a briefing.
Overview.
Great. That's my report.
Take your motion.
Yep.
So you can say that the Steering Committee recommends to the council...
Yes. Steering Committee recommends to the council, so I move that the council approve the reappointment of Lorraine Lynch to the Coventry Housing Authority, term to expire 11/30/24. Second.
Thank you, John. Any discussion? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Thank you.
I move that the council approve the reappointment of Richard Brand to the Water Pollution Control Authority, term to expire 11/7/21. Second.
Thank you. Any discussion? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
I move that the council approve the reappointment of Matthew Tordy to the Water Pollution Control Authority, term to expire 11/7/21. Second.
Thank you, Lisa Conan.
Thank you. Matt Junior, did you miss...
She's jumping around on this order.
I've got it, yeah.
He made his...
It's the order that we discussed them, I think.
All right. Any discussion on that? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
So that was Matthew Tordy, correct?
Mm-hmm.
Yep. I moved that the council approve the reappointment of Albert Bradley to the HUD Housing Rehab, Fair Housing and Human Rights Commission, term to expire 12/31/21. Second.
Thank you. Any discussion? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
I move that the council approve the reappointment of Albert Bradley to the Human Rights Commission, term to expire 12/31/22.
Second.
I got 1/1/22 on my thing.
Uh-oh. Uh-oh.
Is that...
It does say 1/1 handwritten, I think by the staff in the town clerk's office.
So it is 12?
No, 1/1/2022, right.
That's what I have on top of mine.
Right, for Albert Bradley for Human Rights Commission?
Yes.
Oh, so what's the difference? One, 12/31/2001?
I have the same.
I mean, 21?
I have two different dates in the minutes. 12/31 for HUD.
Oh, right.
12/31/22 for Human Rights.
Okay.
I don't know if it's correct.
So we'll move to a point of further correction.
They're different commissions.
Correct, yeah.
Right, but neither of them match up, too. The forms that...
Both wrong.
On the statement of interest form, usually the town clerk puts that date on and that's been pretty accurate historically. And right now, this one says...
So we have only 1/22 and why don't you put a caveat, it can be changed if the town clerk gives you a different information?
It's a day off, maybe.
All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. We got Bradley Vois, right?
Yes.
I move that the council approve the appointment of Line Hoffman to the Senior Housing Alternative Study Committee for the duration of the committee's work. Second.
Who is she representing or is she at large?
At large. It says on her...
I can't find it.
On our agenda.
We're jumping around here.
It's in the agenda on 7D2A. It says it in the agenda, which is nice and helpful, actually.
Any discussion on that?
I think it's great that we have community members willing to step up and be part of that effort.
All right, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
I move that the council approve the appointment of Paulus Vinkles to Senior Housing Alternative Study Committee for the duration of the committee's term.
For another at large?
Yes.
At large.
Thank you, Lisa Conan. Any discussion? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Okay. And we are down to the town manager projects.
It was distributed to you. Any questions? You can try that.
I asked all my questions last time.
In my background memo, I had a couple of things that updated that memo, so the questions were included. I think in sense of experience, I'll just deal with it that way.
Anybody have any questions that they can think of at this time?
Could I get some information about the changes to the paramedic contract? I just want to see what you guys can, I wasn't aware you were...
It's a renegotiation. We can certainly fill you in, but we basically were able to negotiate down some rights.
I did have a question, actually, on the CHS walls combines. They're pushing for an update on the wall scanning to address the being concerned. Help me. This is an eight-year project.
So it's going back a long time.
Right.
So they, it really goes back 22 years ago, when the walls were built in addition to the high school. And some of the walls did not meet the building code at the date of construction. They are stronger than the two buildings they're connected to. And there were much more than just walls, there were all sorts of brackets over basketball hoops and all sorts of other stuff. Most of that has always been corrected. So they've been, for at least three councils, they've been working with a structural engineer named de Blasio to try to figure out how to find out what's inside the walls.
So that's why they're pushing to scan.
They're scanning, so just think about, I keep using Oak Island references. They're finding all sorts of acoustic ways to figure out what rebar is in the walls. We have done some destructive testing, where we actually cut holes in the walls to see what's there. But it's an issue that we need to make, come to some resolution to assure that the buildings are structurally safe for wind and original earthquake code. We've cleared all the earthquake code issues, now it's a sheer wind load issue that in certain torn attic almost, wind gusts, the walls may move. Again, safer than the buildings they're attached to because they have different building codes. So we're trying to figure out that, and that committee has been working very diligently and saved literally tens of millions so far. But we're down to the home stretch now and we have to start looking at, we've done about all that we can do with acoustic testing and minimal destructive testing, we have to start looking at what repairs we're going to do. So it's going to be, we have a big plan that's got disposal, this one needs, you know, appears the top three feet don't have what it needs. And we have to now work with de Blasio engineering to say, is it, things are designed to meet certain lateral strengths across the length of that span. And with all the rebar that we do have, does it average that? So there's just more engineering, but I can assure you in some cases, there's going to have to be reconstructive work. And still don't know what that is. I mean, as simple as everywhere there's a piece of rebar, you have to cut a hole in the wall, get the grout, grout out, the concrete, check the, and tie another piece of rebar because some cases that appears based on the scanning, it only goes up like six feet and doesn't go all the way to 12 feet. That would be very messy. Or is there something else? Again, we're trying to just strengthen it to handle wind gusts.
To build a skeleton or some kind of...
To build an exco, exo-skeletal membrane or structural thing that can just strengthen the wall from the outset. So the committee has been working really hard, but now we're down to, at some point, they're going to meet with de Blasio probably in engineering in January and have him explain the report tomorrow. And they may need to come back and get additional funds to do the next step of starting creative designs. But I think the strategy is instead of trying to do this as one giant project, pick like a wall and start one to see what we learn from corrective repair. And it would be good if we, like the, these are only outside walls that are affected by wind. And not all of them have issues, but one of the ones, the auditorium wall, it has rebar, but it's not, theoretically, the scanner says it's not wide enough because it's supposed to be wider.
It's not a large enough diameter.
Yeah, it's half the size required.
So it's like, do we trust the scanning equipment? So I think there we have to go in and actually do a destructive, cut a hole in a wall, and the school engineers were able to do this last time and repair it and check it.
It doesn't compromise the hole?
No, because it's not, you know, it's a hole like this, but you're in a brick on the outside, which is not really carrying the structure, and you patch it and repair it and it's fine. But, so anyways, they're working hard. That's all I can tell you. It's very, very complicated. And it all came up because they brought a structural engineer into the building because there were a lot of snow on the roof.
And there were some cracks.
And the cracks haven't moved, ever.
And they were monitoring that for a while.
Yeah, they're still there.
A while, a while.
There's still these plastic things with lines on it and they haven't moved.
Which is a good thing.
And they were there before the snow was on the roof, actually, because the major block walls crack. They just do. Thank you.
As of one, can you speak briefly to the...
No.
Perfect.
Just identify, identify.
That was an awesome line.
Self-identified with, to the Northfields water main work and stuff like that, I know that there's been some boil water advisors in the area.
Yeah.
People are asking questions.
So the reason they're replacing the water lines are they're bad. And as they excavate to put in a new line, the asbestos type pipe breaks. It's okay because it's leaky. But, you know, so it breaks. That's why they're doing the project. The system is leaking like a sieve. So yes, it's a real pain in the butt for everybody. Typically what happens is it breaks and repair it within an hour, but they have to, because it changed the public health code, they used to never tell anyone and they just fix it. And now because of the potential exposure of a closed system, they have to do a water test and it takes 24 hours to grow the bacteria to see if there is any. And so yes, there's a boil water advisory again.
Okay.
And I would be supportive. There's 2,000 or, I can't do history, there's more pipe to do, it's about 2,000 feet more pipe, and then that will be done.
So the silver lining would be, once that's done, then it should be really solid for a long time. But getting there may be a little bumpy.
Yeah. And whether they can get done this now, which is their goal, this weather the last three weeks has just been brutal. So I don't know if they're going to make it, whether this is going to carry over spring. At some point they give up.
Okay, thank you.
And I wanted you to update us on the microgrid. Did you speak to anybody last week? Your members, so to be honest.
Oh, yeah, we have a weekly, a weekly conference call every Friday. Shout out to, I think, some of council members know, they state, set milestones for the project and they won't pay until they reach these milestones. And that was something that was fairly recent in a number of rounds and they had seen contracts from a couple rounds ago. And based on some issues they had with another project, they felt they wanted to say, we won't give you anything till you get to this point. And that's a lot of risk. But there's also a termination clause in the contract that says if the project falls apart, you get reperched. So there's conflicting language in the same contract. So there's conflicting language in the same contract. And the micro, coverage of microgrid LLC could not get confirming language out of, an answer out of the DEP business office. So Representative Ackert set up a meeting with, and within three days, we had deputy commissioner meeting in Tim's office area. And within a couple of days, they had DEP's attorney. Yes, there's a conflict that verbally they said, yes, the termination clause would govern in that case if you, if you did your due diligence, it was an appropriate expense. You kind of have to prove that the project fell apart, not because you just gave up, but for financial reasons. This all, it's been a holdup that's lost about two months while we're trying to figure out because they had to put their own money up to hire Eversource to do the final grid design of the switches that would put us into island mode. And it's a $25,000 deposit check, and it's estimated to cost probably another 65 on top of that. So they're putting in all their money, and they wanted to make sure that if Eversource had given them an initial quote of here's what we're cost, and they wanted, for some reason, people don't necessarily trust Eversource, they want to make sure that it didn't like triple, and then the numbers won't work. And this project will fail. And they just didn't want to put that much, they put in a couple of years of, without getting any money on this at all, but now they're talking about serious design money. So they're now comfortable enough that they're proceeding ahead with getting Eversource to come up with the numbers of what that will cost, so they can hone in on what a PPA price would be for us to buy power from them. So we are trying to set up an update meeting prior to the next joint finance meeting, where the auditors are going to be at. And I just need to talk truly about whether you want to have a special full council meeting before that, or just have the finance meeting. So, but the group could come like at 6:30 or something like, or 6:15 even, and then we have 45 minutes before the auditors. So that's, mark it as a possible and can...
Real quick, the silver line with Bolton, I did talk to Dan Champagne. He's trying to get the representatives from Bolton to, I mean, yeah, from Bolton and from, is there another one?
I think they want Senator Cusano from Manchester.
Yeah.
He's the chairman of P...
So he's trying to get it all together. I don't know if he's done that and contacted you, but he told me he would.
I contacted his office, and they told me his office that they're working on it, but they're not updating it.
So we don't have any...
We'll stay on.
Next item on our agenda is 7F3 lot sit project, Swamp Road intersection, and a presentation from the public information meeting.
So I thought it was productive, community development meetings. A lot of good thoughts. We're tracking down some of them, issues to look at. Key notes, timeframes on that, the state head, DOT has set up a meeting for early January on a signal, which is the next big thing, what they're going to require us to do, and so don't put in to just add one. I have a feeling they're going to make us replace the whole system because they did that in another town, which being they would have to work with us to increase the grant. This is a hundred percent grant, and we're going to be at the grant limits. So they would have to kind of give more money to the Caparichi Council of Government to give it to us. So if they do that, we don't have a problem with it.
Would it delay the project more?
Uh, no, no. This still has a possibility of being in the construction this summer. It's not that complicated, a permitting issue for all the other aspects of it. So we're, and I think what this does is show you the connector between Northfields and Swamp Road. Kind of get an order of magnitude. Todd Penner, Todd Engineer, I think, was meeting this morning with the most effective property owner, and I did not have a chance to talk to him on how that went.
So in the public hearing, it sounded like a majority of people were a good month, thought that relocating Northfield to connect to Swamp would be the best way to go?
The sense of the whole was yes. I absolutely agree. There were a couple of people that didn't want, they lived on Swamp Road and think they'll have more traffic. I don't think it would be substantially different because it's so far down. But there were some good things to track down about turn lanes and some other things that we're looking at. But we do own the house now. The owners did move out, and we have keys to that.
You needed variances on the sightlines, did that, or did they understand?
Yeah, and the local traffic authority. So Chief Pond, myself, and Mark Kiefer would be the ones to do that. The real issue is we need good engineering to document, and the existing sightline on Northfields already is poor.
Yeah.
So we believe that this would actually be better. It's, and one of the issues that we had to talk to that neighbor is we would need a sightline easement, so it couldn't grow any trees or anything there, and we'd probably have to purchase that and incorporate it into whatever landscaping plan we have. So there's work to do on that, but again, not...
Do you have an answer, Ronald?
Yeah, the wild card there still is we need to identify his reserve subject system area. And that will be, that also is very important, and that could be a deal breaker for the government.
Okay. Next on our agenda, 7F4 is a circ town profile for 2019. Very informative. It's attached to our agenda. If the public wants to see it, they can go to our town's website and look at tonight's agenda. Does anybody have any questions about it? I'll be right.
I, the only thing I noticed is that our population was going down.
Yeah, that was interesting, by hundreds.
Yeah, and just, the income's pretty good. And I was sort of surprised by that. I mean, I know that it was high already, but you don't really see these things all that often. Sort of depressing. But the population going down, it sort of surprised me.
Probably young people moving out, graduating college and...
All of East Drencaut is slowly kind of decreasing, but it's a lot of it's aging, aging out.
Wagerman?
I'll believe these numbers after the census.
Yeah.
Is it just estimates?
And I'm surprised how little diversity you've got in our town.
And I don't think, I don't think it's intentional.
No.
It's all economic, and I think we're going to see, we're starting to see more diversity moving in. So I think, I think that will sub correct a little bit, maybe not as fast as it should.
Okay, next is 7F5 crumbling foundation update.
Let's see, a few pages here. The good notes, the most important thing is that they're reopening another round to take applications, probably in February. They're expecting that they'll have about 30 days before they run out of money again. So the second really important thing is that UConn has been developing and studying alternative testing programs and looking at the long-term process. And they kind of did this throw-off comment that water triggers this reaction, and went on to talk about their testing program, and everyone went, wait a minute! Stop everything, put a preliminary finding, because we've been assuming that. But now they're scientifically able to prove that water starts these reactions because we've been, as the town, we've been really reluctant to say, you know, we put it framed into things like, if this were my house, I'd be extending my gutters. I'd be changing the slope off away from my house to make sure that I have positive drainage away from the foundation. I'd be checking my curtain drains, maybe consider adding more curtain drains. I'd consider maybe waterproofing the exterior, but those are all expensive things in and of themselves. But if they slow the reaction up, you know, so that's important. The other really cool thing is they have, there's a device called an XRF, which right now, it's a kind of scanner that they've been using for probably 10 or 15 years to test for lead. They've been able to modify it to test for pyrotite. So they will be able to, just kind of with this $15,000 device, scan the walls to see if you have, it's actually maybe not pyrotite, it's pyrite. And then they can calculate based on the amount of pyrite.
Right, different calculation.
There's a mathematical calculation that they can test for. So that could make it easier to test for, especially when you talk about selling houses, not having to do a core sample. And that core sample, you know, let alone the cost, it could take months to get the lab results back. So it's going to be a hindrance. So this is very significant.
I haven't read the report, but, and I don't want to get too far in the weeds, but some of what I had learned early on was that the different types of gravel that contain the pyrotite makes a difference as well. It's not just the percentage of pyrotite in the wall, so.
Excuse me. And one of the, the quarry that also sold the gravel also would sell sand that was ground-up pyrotite. So the worst of all cases was if your contractor bought the sand from them for the mix too, because then you have more surface area.
Yeah.
You know, because it's, you know, so, and nobody knows, you know, that's, that's just, you're never going to know that. So there's, there's a lot of interesting science coming down, and Trinity's doing some amazing work too. So it's good to see our academic institutions really tapping on this. But the other good news is the price is dropping for remediation. Some of that's new techniques where they're using these wall, structural wall things that they basically slide in instead of having to form foundations. And we have, I think, three now in our town that have used that approach, and it speeds the process up and lowers the price.
I'd still like to know why the floor foundation generally doesn't get cracked at all, no matter, it doesn't matter, even if it's made of the same material as the wall.
That's, that's the other mystery. It doesn't crack on flat surfaces. It only cracks on lateral surfaces. And that may just be a matter of the weight.
Maybe it has to do with the water exposure. I mean, I don't know.
So, so it's another question that they would be at. In science, you find something that's different, and then you find out why, and that often gives you solutions. So really impressive stuff. And at this point, the head of the insurance, of the reinsurance group that's, the insurance group that's doing this is reconsidering how fast he's leaving. And he's doing a really good job, so he is, might be staying on for a while, which is very good because for basically a one-employee outfit, he's doing amazing work.
I have to imagine he has like the institutional knowledge to move quickly.
Yeah, he's never worked in the governmental sector before, and he's not used to getting guilted by people. Families call him up, and I'll tell you, we had one house in town that the contractor was doing substantive work, and they got a call directly from him saying, I'm not paying you. Rip it out. They, the new, the new work gone back in, the concrete wasn't, you probably know more than I, but it was, it wasn't, it was a timing, timing issue. It was, it was...
Too wet when it put in?
It was too long, too old before they poured it.
Oh, yeah.
So it wouldn't harden, it wouldn't be the hardness test over time. So made him rip it out, rip out a foundation. He said, I'm not paying for that. Get it out. So, and have you ever seen an insurance company like do that for you? So he cares a lot. And CROG also has a list of legislative changes that we need to help push, and they'll vote those in this week at the policy board, and I'll bring it back and endorse it. But the CFIS, the insurance group, actually only has two more years, and then it goes out of existence. Because it was purposely, I think, given a life to prove itself. And I think it really has, and, you know, we want, like, give it 10 years, you know, just let it keep going. So anyways, amazing work that has been done by everybody on the project. It just shows that government with the right people pushing things can get things done.
Get non-governmental people running them, and it works out really well. No.
Okay.
That's unfair.
Next item on our agenda, 7F5, small a, update on multi-jurisdictional concrete foundation, foundation testing program.
Yeah, I just gave you some data on how many houses in town are being done. We, I think, have our last low, lower-income person, so we're going to be fully subscribed. So there's another small cities grant was, is just being announced, and we have to decide what grants we want to go for. I'm not so sure. I want to do more testing just because it was so hard for us to meet the income levels. And the housing authority has already done some plans to do the grant meeting last time. And maybe that we want to scale back the grant and not go for quite as much money because there's only about $12 million available to statewide. Last year, we were looking for like one and a half. It's just, they want to spread the money around. So I think the reality is we've got to cut it back, do less.
Wise approach.
So that's not, kind of, we'll go into that, probably in a month or two.
Next, we have 7F6, Business View Magazine, November 2019. Communities achieve prestigious sustainable Connecticut certification. John Hand had spoken about this at our CCM convention. The town of Coventry was awarded a silver certificate for our participation, and thank you to our staff who has worked incredibly hard to get these things accomplished.
So if this is a national business magazine, actually, an international business magazine, we're signed up.
Next item, 7F7, the Planning and Zoning Commission decision on the Booth Endemic Memorial Library renovations and improvements. We received it.
Yeah, so the last council sent the building committee, a lot of renovation and improvements committee, to both Wellands and Planning and Zoning. They accounted both. Planning and zoning says, okay, with the size of that community room that that plan has, it'll need probably about six or seven or so. They gave a formula for waiting for architect to do square footage. There's room in the back grassed area to add probably some like millings or asphalt. They then, last week, last Wednesday, went to Wellands Commission and said, come back when you know exactly what you have to do, and we want you to walk through a permit, but it's probably going to be something like a simple rain garden. Because someone in your household maintains rain gardens for us. So it's very minimal expense to deal with parking. Meanwhile, while this is the karma in the world, while we're looking at, doing a video of the drainage system from an existing courtyard, we sent a camera up to look for obstructions, and we actually, Deb Walsh got the contractors, Lotnick Construction, Greg Glislatnick to come, who then called the original guy who installed it. And this was, again, you know, 32 years ago, and between...
He said, oh, yeah, I have that, those records.
But the, again, the monitoring equipment, we sent a robot up the pipe, camera the whole thing. And above that, they have a tracking device that can track the robot through the pavement. So we know, you know, and they put in a B-hive, which is a containment system when the water goes in or slowly filters out. So the guy could explain that, but we knew exactly where it is based on the monitoring. It's nine and a half feet deep towards the back wall. The building plans actually show it going through the state road, and we knew that. So the pipe is in good shape. So there's other things going on. It's not, it's not that drainage system.
The pitch is okay and everything?
Yep. And there's no water in it. And they actually, we were there, and they went and just ran to inches to look at what was going on. But karma in the world, while we were there, one of the neighbors showed up and said, hi, I own the land behind here. Can I donate it to you for this project?
Oh, wow.
So the Doig family has been dealing with his parents' land, and he's like reorganizing things, and he's offering a third of an acre behind the stone wall. So if we... So if we do have to drain behind, so we're going to see whether we can count that donation as part of any match. But obviously, the committee is looking for guidance from the council because it was created by the last council. They don't know whether they should continue to work or not because you guys have any chance to talk about it yet. So generally, some good news, and we have a broader understanding of how everything's working there.
Awesome. All right, next item on our agenda, seven F eight, selection of potential steep projects for grant applications. You all should look it over. It was included.
Can you table this? Because as I mentioned, my background, I think what's going to make the importance for, see what the governor's office says are the priorities and how they're going to score rank it. Frankly, there's no way around it. These are very political. Grants always have been. I gave you my thoughts of kind of priorities. Fires a person in the village is a key priority. Last time we applied for the addition to back of the town hall for meeting room, still we need something like that because this building is 45 years old as a portable classroom that they were going to tear down 22 years ago and dragged it from the back over here. And then obviously, softball field issues are some. I believe the state's going to lean away from recreational grants for a couple of reasons. This program was for economic development. And there's a possibility that some old open space recreation grants could be coming from the federal government. The federal government did approve funds two years ago. It just hasn't gotten down to us yet. So we don't know how it's going to be split up and whether the state's going to take it all. But it used to be we'd get a piece of it for town grants. So there's possibilities there too.
Do you want a motion to table? Or are you just going to table it?
No.
We need a motion.
Entertain a motion.
Move to table seven F eight, second.
Thank you. Any discussion?
Till the next meeting or?
I don't think you have to say.
Till we get the additional information from the...
I need to use the language interchangeably.
You're probably right. Roberts or continue.
I just know that that's come up in the past and we're supposed to say continue.
I think the chair is right. Look at that list because it's just a thought list, but you may have other ideas.
Okay, all those in favor of tabling or continuing seven F eight? For a future meeting, please say aye.
Aye.
Do you want to do this time?
Uh, no, speak quickly.
I've already proofed it.
So we forgot the words.
I got it. I can switch it.
Yep, I got it. I did a souvenir in there.
All right. So wherever left off last night at time was planning zone economic development. So one of the biggest things is every 10 years, the town has to do the plant and conservation development. That's due this late spring. They're well along. They are writing it themselves and updating it themselves. Should note that most towns around us, and most towns in the state hire a consultant probably for $50,000 to $70,000. And our commissions, through a lot of hard work, are doing it themselves. We've been building documents that will serve as appendices to that. And it's not just the cash. I think it's a better document when we do it versus an outside consultant who doesn't know our town, comes in and gives, you know, just their preconceived notions. So they're still having at their planning and zoning commission meetings, open sessions, topics. But when they get down towards the ends, there'll be formal public hearings on it. And the public should really, you know, this is their chance. If you don't like the way development's happening here, this is the plan that leads to the regulations that...
Put on some other hats. Switch hats.
We're going to end up with a mixtape, right?
So planning conservation's a big deal. We're also, over the next couple of months, finishing up a four-town economic development study that we're working with Tallent, Mansfield, and Bolton. We had, and many of you attended the forum and workshop where we went through things. We'll present the results of that over the next month and a half or so. They're finishing up meeting with local businesses directly, which was part of our goal, is to have an outside group talk to our local businesses. And they're going to deal with kind of some branding issues and marketing issues to create a regional identity that we can kind of work on. And again, one of the big partners actually was UConn. They showed up at the meeting. And a lot of good synergies between the towns. So looking forward to that report.
When are they going to do that report together?
Probably about three months down.
All right. Are they going to have like a formal presentation to everyone?
Yeah, I think each town. I think is the way it's going to work now. So Bolton Gateway Sewers, you know, where we are right now is they said no. We're trying, the DEP said no. We're trying to set up a meeting, working with our elected officials to go through that process to see where the path forward is. So that's underway. Nathan, Greenway. I have on my corner of my desk with a couple of other requests for proposals to write a forestry management plan, a proposal to look at some forestry management along the Greenway to clear, you know, some of the, make sure we have a healthy forest along the land that we own. And hidden trails could actually become the first of a walking trail to the forest. So not a huge rush on that, but it's something that I'd like to do. I'm concerned about trees, you know, being just totally unattended. And Mike Sobel actually told me, and I didn't know this, that the land off of Bruce Street actually was forested by the state. So we'll have to take a close look to see whether that was needed or not. And Bear Swamp Road, we're meeting with Andover. Andover's had some leadership changes. We own Nathan, we kept, maintained recreational right-of-way status along Nathan Hale Road as goes through the forest. And the town also kept Bear Swamp Road right-of-way for recreational purposes only. So Bear Swamp Road, most people don't know where it is. But it goes from Bear Swamp Road at the Andover town line through the forest all the way to Judd Road. So if we're looking at a connector for people walking, biking, hiking to the Rails to Trail, they could go down Bear Swamp Road to Long Hill Road, use the traffic light, and right across the street on Route six is the Hopper River Trail. So it's a logical way they could, you know, share the road on the road, which Andover already has, to cross the river, just go up the hill a little bit, go down Bear Swamp Road all the way to Judd. Judd Road is almost at Nathan Hale. So you could actually bike to Nathan Hale instead of to, or back. So one of our goals of this whole project was looking at interconnecting, you know, walkways, recreational things. So Bear Swamp Road probably needs some grading and probably some gravel work. And kind of the next Trails grant will be looking for your permission to see whether we can get some money to just go in and get gravel to grade. There's one little culvert there that may need some work. But that would be a very productive way.
Where are we from homeowners buying into the plan that you had presented to them?
This really isn't even part of that.
Yeah, the Nathan Greenway.
Mixed, you know. That's why we're taking a very slow pace on the rest of this. I don't want to, I don't think we're ready to apply for a grant to have anything on this. I think we need to, I mean, my hope is, again, through this, and we mentioned this to them, the forestry management, that it could be just a more very local residential, neighbors walk your dogs, neighbors walking your dogs down this well-worn path versus any type of formal trail. But my fear is that we do need access to, if somebody gets lost in there, somebody gets hurt in there. We need access for our...
Emergency vehicles.
Our little UAV thing to go and get somebody. So we need some type of access. So we're taking it very slowly. My priority is really to try to connect using the existing roads that we already own. But that's my priority. And I'm sharing this because they've become, you know, your priorities. You know, what you want us to do.
We said, "No, you keep, John's just trying to look at us and you're going..."
So the important thing here is, the important thing here is that Andover is joining in the discussion. We actually have a meeting this week to meet with Andover. So their part where the highway went through there was not included in this. And they are willing at this point to talk about the same type of thing. So it could actually continue from where it comes out, you know, crosses Woodbridge to continue that way too. So that ties back more into this. But we have a meeting with the state on some issues related to bike, that whole thing coming up this week to Lori Jay and Addy from the Trails, part of the DEP, which we want to talk about, you know, when they're grants and so forth. Thank you. So other open space acquisitions, we're not actively going out and looking for open space at this point. We have a little bit of money. What we're doing is trying to work with collaboration. And we have exciting news. We told the last council and maybe this council, that piece of Willimantic River frontage called Schmitt property, which has been on our list for a number of years, is being donated to Joshua's Trust. And they're closing this next week.
Wow.
And they want to get it in this, you know, for tax purposes. So we have, we had permission in the last council to try to help them facilitate feeling, Joshua's Trust to feel comfortable. And there was like an old well issue that we were talking about closing. We found out that the well was actually carved out and deeded, so it doesn't go with the piece of land. But there's some, probably a dumpster load of trash. And we said, "Instead of well, we'll give you, we'll do a roll-off towards, you know, your volunteers can throw stuff in it and we'll pay for getting rid of it." Because Joshua's has done a lot for us, and it's kind of our term to help make this go forward. So we're really excited. This is a big piece of riverfront land that they will be the caretaker and custodian of. And all their land is publicly accessible. So great partnership, and they're able to, you know, get this donation. And it's very significant. So we're excited about that. So those are the types of things we're looking at more. We are talking about looking at better border marking on some of our properties. And the towns have talked about maybe on Hopper River Trail actually having mileage markers. Because when people do have incidents, if they were able to say...
Is he going to identify where you are in the...
Right. They're happy. "Well, I passed a big tree." So it's really hard for emergency rescue people to know where they are. So that was an idea that came out of Andover. So we're going to start looking at that and see whether there's something we can do through the Capital Region Council of Governments on that. EDC, we're conducting business visits and outreach. Couple of very positive things are, we had a good meeting with Teleflex. Based on that, they actually are renting out space beneath Pizza on Main, where there was a machine shop down there. So that also, they're trying to get in by the end of this month. So, and with that, they'll be able to get rid of the two big containers that are in the back parking lot that really are kind of a zoning violation that we've tolerated while they're in transition with space. But, you know, very positive meeting there. I had a positive meeting with the Virginies up on Bread Mill Street. So people don't realize that they make the soda syrup like at Lakeview. If you buy fountain drink there, on the menu it says Cola Blue. Those flavors are from Coventry, Connecticut, and they're sold across the country. Tim, Lip Trap is also going to be starting a Facebook for business workshop. We'll be getting information out over the next week. It's a, for about 10 or 15 businesses. They have to be willing to invest a couple hundred dollars into their own advertising. But it's going to be multi-week sessions, I think five or six sessions for a couple hours. So our businesses will go first, and then we'll open up to other towns. But it's a very exciting opportunity. Tim, Lip Trap has run lots of Google workshops. And now he's doing, going into Facebook advertising and how to advertise your building at really low cost. So we'll be getting the word out, but that's the types of things Economic Development Commission is doing to really support local businesses. Capital lands, the grant is underway for us. We got a $20,000 grant to hire an engineer and our architect to do a survey of what's there and develop kind of some cost estimates of what it would take to, for whoever the new owner is to renovate that. There are some insurance issues that we need to work with, with the current executor of the estate. It's having a hard time finding insurance. And I'm seeing what our insurance carrier may be able to do because they have access to markets that he may not have. Or whether there's something where we, if we had an insurable interest, we could maybe cover them for this period of, and the council will have to approve this. I'm just letting you know, it's something that we're looking at to try to stop them from just selling it for, selling it right now for subdivision, which is what we have the authority to allow a broader economic development interest for somebody to adaptively reuse it for something that would be a business oriented. Maybe a combination business. So we're just starting to pursue that. This issue just arose last week. And also last week, and it was in the JI last Friday, the probate judge has had it with some of the issues. And Dr. Cook is now being referred to for civil contempt. So it's up to the prosecutors whether they'll take the case or not.
That was in the paper, is that what you're saying?
Yeah.
That's why you can say it.
That's why I can say it. It wasn't, the JI had it, I think, Friday.
She was...
Notice is public too.
Notice is public.
The legal filings attached to them.
But...
It was criminal contempt, wasn't it?
Yeah.
You said civil.
Yeah.
Well, they're both mentioned.
Right, okay. Well, there we go.
So it's out of the probate court arena. And it's a full legal thing for the, in a sense, stealing a tractor and not providing any of the financial records for 20-something years. So that is heating up. And that's, you know, something that we need to, we have been monitoring and assisting without spending money. But at some point, we need to figure out whether we, how far we want to go. So we're exploring what options. We have to solve a problem. And I have a conference call with George Pearl, the acting executor, and Eric on Friday. So we'll see more in there. Our insurance companies, again, looking at options, both pointing them to a private sector insurance company that can get coverage, or whether there's something we can wrap it under our policy. So we would know what that would cost if there is. Farmer's market lease renewal, that's really two years away, which means we should start talking about it this year. Sherry Hack is no longer with the Antiquarian Landmark Society. So, you know, we're beginning with interim people. She had just sent before she severed ways with them a letter to us asking that they would take over renting out our market barn for us, which has some logic to it in terms of for their weddings and so forth. We would still have it for the farmer's market and for whatever else, you know, we would negotiate in there. We're not using it a lot. We have probably two or three events there a year. And at least one time, there was a conflict with something they had going on. So together is probably better. We just have to make sure we protect our rights. We just have to make sure we protect our rights. But I don't know of a better spot for that market. So last time those negotiations were not easy, because they see all those people and believe that somehow there's a lot of money available to pay our annual lease for that, which is covered by market fees. So we'll have to continue that discussion. But we are not going to negotiate now to do the barn rental. That will be part of whatever renewal we have, because we don't want to give up a chip and then, you know, not have that later. So that's, that's that. Public safety, we already talked about the fire merger committee, the final report, and the MOU is hopefully coming sometime in January. The MOU, Memorandum of Understanding, I've kind of put that on hold, because I think we might be close enough to jump right to, to kind of a final agreement versus having an interim memorandum of understanding that we could spend another two months just not out here discussing. So citizen first aid, we are running Stop the Lead, and they're also, we've been doing some citizen first aid courses. The fire departments have both asked that as part of this budget process, we look at incentives for them. That was something they wanted as part of the MOU, and I said, I can't sign an MOU on something that's significant. What are they, what are you looking at? What's the cost? What type of budget priority you're looking at? But specifically, they're looking for doubling the length of service award program, which we need to look at structuring what that would, not only what that would cost, but how you earn those credits. And then secondly, they're looking at a profit tax abatement, which has been an issue that's come up on and off. So Jim, right now, is doing comparison of what other departments have, and a lot of them have different things, but not all, they don't have all of them.
And that one particular thing is that it's not just on membership rate, it's on actual participation.
Yeah. But the, so the additional bonus or the additional increase could maybe be geared towards certain activities that we need. For example, we definitely need more ambulance coverage. So maybe that would apply only to if you go on ambulance calls. So you have a benefit for being a firefighter, and then if you're also an ambulance person or only an ambulance person, you would get this one. But there's lots of thoughts, but it's not an easy, easy thing. And again, the liability, this is really, in a sense, a pension plan, although they call it insurance policy. Our auditors are starting to lean towards the unfunded liability. Right now, it's only funded at 58%. So I have concerns about doubling that. So, but it's definitely worth, it's a important thing. We've got to have people show up.
What's the size of the?
Testing my memory, but it's like 102 or something like that. But, so, EMD, Emergency Management, sitting on a different corner of my desk is a job description for Deputy EMD to have a backup in case Jim's not around. At this point, we have a person identified who wants to do it as a volunteer. I just got to have a job description. I need those 10 minutes to do this. Police, got some really minor stuff to finish up. The state radio project, this spring, we have an onsite CLIA inspection. The chief talked about that. There'll be chance for our community input, but they got a lot of things, they got to have reports, they got to update and write and improve things. They've been doing a lot of community outreach. I think good start on their social media campaigns, working with our local businesses worked well. School security, they've been helping a lot on that. Our first officer leaves early January for the FBI Academy, and they've been reviewing and going over student threat assessment issues, and the student outreach review board has been very, very busy, which is an alternative to more bad stuff. So our youth services and police department both.
Just to note, the next stop, the bleed class is 114 at Station 11, 7:00.
So you can register for that through the rec department. General Government, we talked about revale. Finance, we're finishing up the audit. Just got the attorney's letter today from our attorney to give the auditor. We've seen some draft things. I don't anticipate any issues, but that has to be done by the end of this month. ECHIP, our health insurance, they're doing the funding. Looks like we're having another good year, so I would not anticipate significant insurance increases, which is very helpful, and that's about 10% of our budget.
Are they going to do utilization review or something at one point? Did they do that? Or how do they, are they doing any reviews of the performance to look for areas of improvement?
More like case management, like causation? Yes, we do.
That's utility.
Yeah, that's right. And we do tie that into our wellness programs, too. We had a couple bad, we had a bad year, but the, they're not here anymore. So that experience isn't carried forward. So we're doing okay. Town side is not as lucrative as the, the gold side has, has solid funding behind it, and we're basically looking at, over time, we need to make up some of that money. We'll pull together, but we are isolating it. State, so, drive fiscal meeting, not 12/12, it's, no, it's our.
Oh, January, oh, yeah, for the audit.
Computer backup project, this is starting, we're working with the Board of Ed to part of our cybersecurity and, you know, be able to be operational. We're working on creating a joint backup center in the police dispatch area where we already have that area. So combining the town and.
We're all connected by fiber, too, so that.
Yeah, and the town and the board have been developing this for about a year, and it's starting to happen this coming month. So we're building it. And so far, budget-wise, it looks like we're worth the money that has been proved, so.
Is that backup for like data loss or hackers?
Any cyber threat, towns are huge, and actually a smaller town, the worst. So I don't know how to buy a Bitcoin. I might have to find out real fast, but I know who to call. You know, who to call the FBI and who to call at KERMA. KERMA has really, our insurance company is really geared up to step in and guide you if you get attacked. They're, they're geared immediately to start helping you, but they also make all of other federal calls that we have to call. Towns are, towns and boards of education are hot, top targets. And we're, we are doing something that if we, something freezes up, we can shut that down and run it from somewhere else.
Send it to another computer.
Yeah, they have to be separated enough and screened enough, but we're also with CEM, which also has some securities built into it, and especially the old-fashioned type of attack denial service. That, well, you can't deny our service to us, and those softwares are like you can download for 10 bucks. So if you don't have that type of level of internet screening, and CEM is excellent at it. CIP and operating budget, the CIPs were due, the capital budgets were due to me on Friday, so next week I'll start, or if I have time this week, I'll start putting that together. My goal has always been, and somehow I'm not always as successful, to bring that to council sometime, or before the rest of the budget, so you can kind of have some input into that as we go forward. This is where I always say the capital budget, while we make some progress, we never seem to have enough there, and if we can pay cash, it's always better. Redone GIS, Mike mentioned, Capital Region Council Governments put their GIS system out to bid, and there's a new vendor coming in. We're actually one of the pilot towns. It'll probably be live sometime in January. We'll do more than our existing system is. My goal is to, right now, we have two town systems, one that kind of started out of the assessing office functions, and one that started through the Capital Region Council Governments, and I really only want one, because there's, Capital Region Council Governments one is covered by our dues. The other one, we pay a couple grand a year for, and staff likes that one better, but I'm hoping that we can put our foot down and get the new product, depends on the new product. And we had, we had a couple of people on the Development Committee for CROC to try to get our needs done. Peg Petua grant application, besides a debate on whether Peg Petua is a soft tea or a hard tea, all this camera equipment, we got through a grant. It's now almost 10 years old, and they finally opened up a round. It will probably be the last round of funding. They have $5 million statewide, but that's paid for by the little fee on your cable TV bill that the state just decided they had better uses for that in economic hard times, and they're now putting some money back, but they're putting one time back. We are working with the Board of Education to come up with a grant. It's like due in a couple of weeks. And we have HB, which is the company that we worked with before, we tried to look at a different company out of here, and they're due to come up tomorrow afternoon. What could possibly happen with that? But the project engineer that installed that is coming back out. The salesman is already sculpting it, but the engineer just wants to look at it. But we would probably be replacing the cameras to go to high def and a lot of the control mechanisms, and there's, technology's come a long way.
Would that impact the sound? I think at home, it puts you up to 180 or something to hear any.
That, I believe, is a charter issue, and we've talked to them about it. Because you don't have it on YouTube.
Oh, you don't have the problem? Okay.
That's good. I did, wrote one of those grant applications years and years ago.
Yeah.
Some money for Manchester Auditorium.
So we'll, we're, again, working with the Board of Education, Jeff Beebe and their folks, because they bought their equipment about the same time we were in the same grant before. So we're looking at that. Tech security upgrades, our door locks are so old. How old are they? If people remember the PBAs, the little IPACs, compact with the little stylus, that's how we have to program our doors. Compact.
I know. I just haven't heard that mention.
IPAC, it's an IPAC, compact, with a little plastic stylus. And we thought we were absolutely dead because the battery died. And I found one on deep in the internet somewhere to replace the battery for it, and it did charge up, but the software is, is like so old that it's not supported by anybody. So we're going to, we're losing the functionality of all our town hall door locks. So we need to, that has to be a priority for, at least at town hall. We'd like to try to start looking at replacing all the systems at all the firehouses and so forth, that have one system that you can be programmed in to whatever you need access to. That may be a multi-year program. We are looking at whether there's a way we can share the system that the schools have. They have some licensing issues that we're not so sure that we can get through, but they, their badges are their keys, so we might be able to go to that. But the town hall at minimum, and there's four locks on that, we got to look at. And these are independent. We'd like to go to network so that you can change it. It's like when they changed daylight savings time, all our locks were screwed in, like we program it. Each one, physically, you have to go to it and hope the iPad battery stays charged long enough to put the two prongs in and program it. So that's, that's an issue, and ideally, we'd love to tie it like the Board of Ed does into automated time cards. So when you walk in that building, you're punched in. Red Resin Parks, Creaser, we're looking at a greenhouse, a grant application that's available through us through the Sustainable CT. It would be a crowdsourced funded match, and they will help us do a video and get people that donate to these types of projects. We tried crowdsourcing one other time, had limited express. We got some, we got the place gave for lid law, because it was not as robust as we thought it was going to be. But this group that's funding this and doing the match also helps you get the other donors. So long-term, they wanted us to think bigger. Based on our lid law crowdsourcing, I'd rather just try to go with the greenhouse first. They would like us, we have a concept using one of buildings as a commercial kitchen, but that's like big bucks.
So we'll just plant the seed with this one, the greenhouse?
Okay, and let it grow and see what happens. This golf, the signs are being made. They don't want to have it operational until you have all the signs. And the guy, we have somebody donating the signs making, but he's a UPS driver, too. And somehow they're kind of busy for this time of year. So, but he's, anyway. So that's, we're hoping that at least six holes will have everything kind of in play in the last three holes. We're still arguing over a couple of trees and not letting them move the course, don't take the tree out. Miller Richardson baseball irrigation, the system's in the ground, we just need to finish moving the tank up from the transfer station over and put on blocks. That will be operational this spring. We would like to get it all kind of ready to just add water, and then in spring it will be operational. Football field venting, the anchor engineering is getting the permit for us to fix the cap. Lid law septic system testing, it's on our list. We keep on trying to get up there, and then it snows. Patriots Park Community Center flooring, the subflooring's all down. We just got final prices, and today decided we're going to do vinyl planking, similar to like the community room the firehouse has. It's a little bit more expensive than carpeting, but the carpeting always just gets destroyed by craft projects. So just that area that we fixed, we'll have the vinyl planking, and that's where we'll do the crafts. So that section of floor is very strong. The drainage that did an outside of building should help a lot. So again, looking at that kind of 10-year timeframe for the rest of the life of that building.
Definitely held the capacity crowded with the Christmas trees there for Christmas.
Yeah, we don't have any other.
It works very well.
We don't have any other place that could do that.
Right, no, it's awesome. It works very well.
It's the biggest space we have available to us for the town. So where the caretaker's house was, if I can free up a little time from Todd Penny, I want to look at creating additional parking where the house was. You know, there's kind of a double bay right now on the other side of the fence, and we could probably do a double bay on the inside, maybe change the entrance to where the house entrance was. There's already a driveway there, get you farther away from the hump of the curve, and then that area could just be a full kind of circular pattern. So I don't think it even has to be, and probably our planning and zoning wellness commission would prefer if it just be gravel, processed gravel, so it's not going to be expensive. Not a lot of grading and stuff that has to be done there. But I think that would add a lot to a lot of the events in the park just by using.
Is it essentially flat now?
A little hump, but yeah. But I, again, if our town crew had time, certainly within their ability to grade that off and do it as a town project, we just are out of time because of bonding projects. But it's probably a three to four day project if we could free up time, so. But we need material, so that will be a budget consideration for you, is what I'm trying to get to. to get to. Hayes, Haynes Art. We want to look at Hayes.
David Hayes.
Yes. We're having continued discussions with them of what to do to help promote them. Out of the Canyon Falls, there was an old elevator wheel. It's like this big and it's sitting in the back of a hill roadhouse. And we'd like to find a spot to just build it because it's part of our history in our old village. Wasn't the first elevator in town, in town, but it's a very historic elevator. It's actually number one of the Philadelphia Elevator Company. Its model, it's the first one they built of that model. And that company is now owned by Otis. So there's history. But the first elevator in town was actually down on Depot, but this was the first of this model. So it's kind of, we saved cool parts of it. Just would make a great, we just got to find the right spot for it in the village area to put it. So that's that. Other events, Christmas Village, this is timely. Joint finance, that's timely. Reach across the record, that's timely. And the holiday, this is still timely. We had food distribution today with gifts, but we're still looking for bell ringers. It has been narrowing windows of time that the stores are allowing because customers have complained that they just don't want to hear for four weeks. So, so we're just starting up at Highland Park. They only really want it two weeks. Wicked joined in this year to help us. So Dunkin' Donuts, we had an issue where somebody was unauthorized bringing. Not for us, but it was somebody that people recognized as one of our volunteers and they were raising money for Christmas in the village, but they didn't have permission to store owner. So we're, it's all good intentions. So we're trying to get back into that. But if people want to sign up, you can go online and pick a time. And that's it. So again, just, we have a lot of stuff going on, but a lot of it's really good stuff.
Can we, as a council, pick a time where we could have a meeting to discuss our goals? Do you want Laura Stone to send out an email or can we, is anybody available this Wednesday or Thursday evening?
That's two off hours. Two days?
No. Okay. So have Laura Stone start?
But could it be after December?
No.
No?
We really should approve our goals as soon as possible. We'll try to poll, find out when people are around and what their vacation. What time on Saturday? I mean, it'll probably only be a couple of hours.
Well, that's what we said at the beginning of this meeting.
Yeah. John's talking.
All right. So please watch for an email from Laura Stone.
Did you skip over 9A?
Nope. That's next. We just finished John's project so that we could talk about goals. All right. Item 9A 19 slash 20 dash 27, consideration, possible action, ratification of union contract, Board of Education, Coventry Education Association for 2020 through 2024.
I move to ratify the union contract.
Nice.
Second. Third.
Wow. All right. Any discussion? Finances looked it over. The Board of Ed and their staff was at a meeting of executive sessions. We have some specific questions and we're good to go.
Questions are answered.
Yeah. Yes, Lisa.
I'm just, I appreciate that we are showing a public support for the teachers contact. I learned this evening during that, I should say this right. I learned that I always assumed there were three things the council could do. Not take action and it goes into effect, deny it, or vote to support it. But apparently the legislation statutorily, there are only the two things that are required, either leave it sit or decline to accept it. But I think if we're going to have it going to effect, it's important for us to publicly say that we support it. I think that creates a good bridge with us and our Board of Education. And I think it also sends a positive message to parents and to the taxpayers who are supporting our schools.
Better for planning.
So I support the motion.
Okay. All those in favor, please say aye.
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 I don't think you get two votes for a letter, John.
Next item of 9.
Are you trying to vote twice?
19 slash 20 dash 28, considerable possible action, recommendation by town attorney to repeal ordinance, Article 4, Section 38 dash 91 through Section 38 dash 96 due to changes in state law and to call a public hearing on this matter.
There's an appropriate motion and there was a legal notice to be to call a public hearing. And I'm not recommending January 20th, 2020 at 7:00. 7:00 o'clock or 7:15 because that's how long you think it's going to be?
January 20th?
Yeah. That's Tuesday night because of Martin Luther King Day.
That's the 21st. 21st.
I wrote this with Donald. Yeah, that's correct. I'm sorry. Thank you.
So it's a regular council meeting.
So do we need to read the legal notice?
No, you just need to authorize us to call a, call a public hearing and advertise it.
We've authorized town manager to call a public hearing and advertise it on 1/21/20?
Second.
1/21/20. That's what he said.
At what time?
Why did he say 7:00?
We changed it to 7:00.
I know that sometimes I should sit here, but I'm just nervous that if you have a crowd here.
It won't allow time?
Yeah.
Okay.
So you need the time in the motion? I'll incorporate that in my motion if you'd like. 7:00 o'clock.
So it's been incorporated into the motion.
And do we have a second?
Second.
I want it to be Lisa Matt Jr. for the record.
Oh, Lisa can have it.
All right. Thank you, Lisa.
Lisa C.
Thank you, C.
Anybody have any questions?
That's not even my real name.
Questions or discussions about this? It's pretty self-explanatory at this point.
Yeah. It's a typographical error. Should be corrected.
Everybody in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Do you have to pick a date for that or?
We did think that you included.
Oh, I'm sorry. I thought you were talking about the next one already.
Okay. Next item on our agenda.
Next one's a technical.
9C 19 slash 20 dash 29, considerable, consideration, possible action, recommendation by town attorney to consider a revision to Section 70 dash 88 of the Town Code entitled, quote, "public gathering," close quotes, to correct a typographical error.
So moved.
And second?
Now I ask if we need to have a date. You're calling a hearing.
Do we have a?
Public hearing, yeah.
Yeah, same thing. You're calling a public hearing for a dating.
Same, same night.
Oh, the same night?
Perfect.
1/21/20. At 7:00 o'clock or 7:15 or 7:00?
Right after, following the, following the earlier one.
Did anybody swear? Are we?
Any further discussion on this item?
Just to clarify, this is kind of type of, redundant ordinance.
All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All right. 9F, can we just do a motion to table slash continue? It's on council goals.
Move to continue 9F?
Second.
Thank you, John Hand. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
9G 19 slash 20 dash 33, consideration, possible action, dissolution of town boards and commissions. Number one is the insurance advisory committee.
Whoa.
And number two is the personnel appeals board.
9G.
So moved.
Second.
Can we take them together? Matt, talk to them.
I would just do them separately because as Matt Junior pointed out, the personal appeals board is already, has kind of technically done it. We just want to.
So I rescind. My second. Can I modify my motion to just include the insurance advisory committee?
Well, no, no, no. You need to do both.
One at a time.
Right. You're on the right track.
Okay. So I was modifying it to just include the first one.
Thank you.
Second.
Okay. Any discussion on that? Matt Jr. spoke about it in his steering committee. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
So move for the second one. Second.
So is that actually disbanding it? They're already disbanded.
It's already done, but we're, John, you were about to say what you wanted to modify the personal.
Matthew Junior said that they haven't been notified yet, so we.
So we're authorization.
Authorization to notify.
Okay.
Of the dissolution of their board.
Second.
Aye.
All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Thank you. 9H 19 slash 20 dash 34, consideration slash possible action, acceptance, conveyance of Desiato subdivision, Old Eagleville Road.
So for some of you, this will be new. When there's subdivisions, they're often asked for some type of public benefit. In this case, and very commonly now, we ask for conservation easement so it preserves a special part of the land. This is a riverfrontage land. So in that area, they can't just like clear cut it. So.
Move to accept a conveyance associated with Desiato subdivision on Old Eagleville Road? Second.
Thank you. Any further discussion?
Cover it. Controversial easement.
It's up to you now.
Third take.
It means we're here too long, John, in case you didn't. They're expensive.
Yeah, it's probably safer. So this piece of land actually is the filtration system for, this piece of land is actually a filtration plant for connective water. But it's a residential lock.
Is that a filler agent?
And this used to happen all the time.
So just early voters on?
I'm taking a motion, right? That's it. Just taking a vote, I mean.
Operator.
That's okay.
So this piece of land is actually the filtration plant for the connective water to feed the village. From their new balsa.
All those in favor of this conveyance, please say aye.
Aye.
Lisa Thomas?
Aye.
And I will abstain from this. Next item, 9I 19 slash 20 dash 34, consideration, possible action, adoption of a no tolls resolution. There was a document included in our packet. Do I have a motion to accept this?
So moved.
And a second? Thank you.
I'd like to make a motion to amend.
Tell us what to do.
I move to amend the resolution as follows. Strike the third paragraph, which has no statistical foundation and is made moot by the governor's current proposal to toll only on 14 bridges. And replace the third paragraph with the language, quote, "whereas the Coventry Town Council recognizes that the Connecticut Office of Fiscal Analysis projects significant operating deficits in the next three years. It therefore opposes using $1.5 billion of the Budget Reserve Fund, also called the rainy day fund, as a means to fund necessary transportation infrastructure improvements." And revise paragraph four to read, "now therefore be it resolved that the Town Council, the Town of Coventry, is opposed to the imposition of tolls on its residents and businesses and to expending more than half of the current Budget Reserve Fund on transportation infrastructure improvement and urges its elected representatives in the state legislature to oppose any measure that would take these actions."
All right. And does the original?
She made a motion. No, she's the second.
No, it has to be second.
Second.
Okay. And then do I ask if the first two?
No, your vote on.
Okay. Anybody have any questions of this or need more explanation?
No, I mean, if you're going to do all that, then you should tell the state to stop stealing money from all the other sources of revenue that they should be using for.
Well, it's the special transportation fund.
All right. Discussion, all those in favor of Lisa's motion, please say aye.
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 Aye. All those opposed, please say nay.
Nay.
Nay. So Lisa's motion fails. So now we're back. Any questions on our original motion? On the original proposed? Yes, Lisa.
I just, I understand what the resolution's trying to do. I just think that since it's so out of line with the current conversations, that it's, it doesn't make sense for that to be what we're talking to our legislators about. That's the first thing. And the second thing is, I feel we should also take a stand against reading the rainy day fund to the extent that is being proposed, given what the Office of Fiscal Analysis is telling us. You know, that's also going to create problems for us. So.
I agree with that part.
I just think that the resolution as it stands doesn't include enough and also includes things that don't make sense at this point. I think it's a, it reflects an older conversation and older proposals. So I'm not really sure how to approach this with legislators.
Well, I can tell you what will affect me is that I'm going to pay a significant amount of money for my truck to go on those highways.
On those bridges.
That's right. And, you know, I pay a tremendous amount of money already in gasoline tax.
And I'm not saying you don't.
So, you know, for me, it hits home. It's going to hit home and I'm going to either pass that cost on to my customer, which I can't. So it means that my net income will decrease by $1,000, $1,500, $2,000 a year. So that's not cool.
I'm not saying it is. I'm just saying that I don't think this resolution reflects the current reality.
Reflects my reality.
No, I'm not saying.
So you're talking about the increase in traffic?
Number three. Yeah, the increase in traffic on our secondary roads.
That's not an issue at this point. We're not near any of those bridges. We're, you know, are you going to have your trucks like go through Coventry to avoid the Tredor Bridge or wherever? You know what I mean?
No, but I think that it's a, it's a bigger picture. It's, we're saying it's Coventry, of course, but it's, it could happen anywhere.
Right. I hear that.
This one says secondary roads in the town of Coventry.
Yeah, it just doesn't make sense.
You could just take out Town of Coventry if you want. In many of our Connecticut towns. I don't know, is that what you're trying to say?
And the secondary road's going to help you avoid a bridge? Like you still, you still get across the water.
Towns around the tolls will be affected. So if we take out Town of Coventry, then it doesn't pertain to town.
Maybe you want to rework it, like continue this and rework it and come back or?
That's kind of goes to what I was going to talk about, so I'll just blurt it out here. Again, I read the resolution here. I think, given the history of the changing nature of what the proposals are, that I think that we should wait until we have more information of something that we could actually address because as, as has been pointed out, the stuff in this resolution doesn't match what the proposal is right now. It doesn't seem to fit everything. So I would like to, as, as a, something I've heard other council members do from time to time is to, we shouldn't be acting right now because we don't have enough information to act on it. That the tolls proposal has been changing to, started out smaller, then it went bigger, and now it's smaller again, and now it's just bridges. So I really feel that we should have something that matches what the scenario that actually happens is as opposed to, you know, just some nebulous thing of whatever it is this week.
Well, my fear though is that this could, I think that.
There's a timing issue.
We need to let our legislators and the governor know that we are opposed to tolls in the state of Connecticut.
Could you write something as council chair?
I think, I want to see a resolution from the town council. There's other towns that are doing this and I think it's a good idea.
So I know some of, I know some of those towns did it when this language made sense. So I know some of, I know some of those towns did it when this language made sense, this kind of, because this is kind of boilerplate that was going around the towns, and it made sense then, but it doesn't really make sense now. I mean, it doesn't look well for us to be, like, the majority of the resolution is about that, and it doesn't, it doesn't make sense. I mean, I still also would want to see something, to support the motion, I'd also want to see something about protecting the rainy day fund, because, I mean, there's also a proposal to spend over half of what's there, which, I mean, we all know, we would never do that in our town either. So I think we need to, like, really make a bipartisan effort to, to address both issues, because neither scenario is really going to be a positive thing.
I think there's also just a discussion, in addition to not taking all the money out of the rainy day, quote, rainy day fund, I quote, was to oppose diversions of funds from the Special Transportation Fund.
That's what I was getting at, yeah.
Yeah.
So do the resolution focus on that?
No, but if you're adding something, finding it saying, don't take money from here, also don't strip money from here.
Yeah, so let's hammer that out to replace the third paragraph.
Yeah, it needs to be.
The rainy day fund and the Special Transportation.
Do you have something there?
I don't. I'm still.
My personal feeling is, is kind of echoed a little bit of what John said, is that in my line of work, we really are dependent on data and kind of knowing what the proposal is. And I don't feel personally like I have a good sense of what the governor wants to do. It seems to be a moving target, and.
I don't think he does either.
Yeah, and I just.
That aside, it's still in motion.
So I'd like to kind of be sure of what I'm voting for or against before I make a decision. And especially because I am a little bit concerned. I know that in the past, there have been some council members who have jeopardized town funding, not anybody at this table, based on things they said and done as a council person, and I don't want to see that ever happen. And I'm, I'm just afraid, you know, that there's, you know, there'll be grudges and whatever, and, you know, maybe we won't get that steep funding that we want. So I would, you know, I would like to consider this maybe at a later time, maybe next month after the governor meets.
After they approve it.
Yeah, that's my fear, that without letting them know before they have their discussions, then our opinion won't weigh in at all. I'm thinking, well, I mean, we could take the approach that you write a letter on behalf of the council, and then you continue to take this up at the next meeting.
If everyone's willing to meet to talk about goals, we can put two items on that agenda, and we could pass them both on the same day. And that would be done in a timely fashion before the meeting of the governor. I think we can come up with language that would be much better than this. So.
Yeah, that was my other objection, is that I just couldn't say the logic that which.
Is that okay with everybody?
Well, certainly in the right direction. I am still concerned about what it is, you know, what the governor's proposal will be, and how that changes through time. May, you know, the later this goes, the more we'll know. But I understand your point about, oh, it's already going to be done, then, well, but on the other hand, not knowing what you're going up against, and what the cost of that may be, as Lisa has generally pointed out, I think we as a council should really weigh our options before just, you know, putting something out there that may rile some of the wrong feathers or whatever.
I'm opposed to the restitution of tolls in any form in the state of Connecticut. How's that?
Yeah.
Oh, that's an opinion.
Okay.
Well, that would be my opinion as well. I mean, I, I just think it's just another money grab.
So do we need a motion to?
So we move to continue this to the next meeting that we're also going to use to discuss council goals.
Thank you. Matt Senior, Lisa.
Appreciate the conversation around with them.
All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Thank you.
Wow, this is like the last page of these.
Whatever, what was it?
Aye.
Tabling it to discuss it with our goals.
Lisa, could you email out your proposal to the council?
Yeah. Thank you for that.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, we are.
Back into executive session.
Oh my God.
I moved it to Town Council under an executive session pursuant to Connecticut general statutes 1206D, discussion of the selection of a site where the lease, sale, or purchase of real estate by a political subdivision of the state when publicity regarding such a site, lease, sale, purchase, or construction would cause a likelihood of an increased price until such time as all the property has been acquired or all proceedings or transactions concerning same have been terminated or abandoned, with the following people in attendance, the seven members of the Town Council and the Town Manager, John Ossiter.
Second, thank you. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
I move it to Town Council under an executive session pursuant to Connecticut general statutes 1206E, discussion of any matter which would result in the disclosure of public records or the information therein contained, described in subsection B of section one, excuse me, I, two, no, one, two, ten. With the following people in attendance, seven members of the Town Council and the Town Manager, John Ossiter.
Second, thank you. All those in favor?
Aye.
All right.